Okay. I'd like to call this November 26th meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
With the deepest of gratitude, may we humbly petition the guiding hand of divine providence to this assembly as also to our daily lives.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the role clerk, Manley.
Chick.
Here.
Otto is apps or late with notice. Manley, here. Chalkley.
Here.
Selena.
Present.
Bellinger.
Here.
And Dockett is probably running late.
Okay. We have a forum, so we might as well get going. The next item, and the first item on the agenda, is the presentation of the audit. And we have Mr. John Pfeffer here tonight to do this for us. Please make sure that's turned on and take it out and hold it up to your mouth.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep. Keep it up a little higher even.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Try again. Yeah.
All right. There you go. All righty, well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for having us as your independent auditors. It's always a pleasure to come out here and, you know, work with Northfield Township. And alls I can say is all the departments did a great job. They're very helpful. And again, some of the board members are not in the offices on a daily basis to see what's going on, but we just wanted to let you know that everything is running very well. I would also like to say with that, too, is this is about second year that we've been working with her in the audit. And I just want to let the board know that she's doing a great job. We do appreciate everything that she does. And we continually see improvements and less journal entries, and it's going very well. What this does is it allows us to get the audit done timely and within budget, which is very important. So I did want you to know that. So that's very good. And most important, we're gonna, again, be reporting to the state of Michigan that the township has an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that the independent auditor can issue, which is very good. So the importance of this is to let the state of Michigan know that everything is in good shape financially and accounting-wise. And so then, if you should want to go out for bonding, that would not be a problem. It would be very favorable. And also for state shared revenues, that's important to be able to continually get your state shared revenues. So I did want you to, you know, be aware of that, which is very important. Also, as part of the audit and the financial end, we take a real hard look at the investing of the township, the investments, the security, the kind of return, which is important to us because, again, with the amount of funds that the township has invested, it's, you know, important that that's securely invested, protected for the residents of Northfield Township. And we do want to report that the treasurer did a great job with that, so I want to make you aware of that.
Thank you, Lenore.
Yes. Now, also to go on the financial end, we look at how the funds ended up within the year. So the good news was you stayed within budget. You know, you tightly budgeted your funds, police, fire, and the general. And what was very important was the board had set a goal that they wanted to at least maintain a fund balance that equaled eighty-five percent of the projected expenditures of the township for the general fund. And the good news was is that you were able to go over that and hit ninety percent. So that was very good. So you went, you know, above your goal. And, you know, that fund balance is a healthy fund balance, and you should continue to strive for that. With that, too, I just wanted to mention that the law enforcement fund was, at the end of the year, able to get to the point where they still, almost like broke even, which is what you want to do. You have the millage, you pay your expenses. And it does have enough funds in there to meet next year's expenditures for that fund. And then when you go over and look at the fire, when you look at what happened there, you were able to buy a new fire truck out of the fire fund. And then you were able to maintain about a hundred percent of your next year's required balance. So that was very good. So all across the board, all the funds ended up to be, you know, healthy at the end of the year. With that, though, I would like to stress that it is important that each fund stands on its own. So the millages for police and fire, or if you should have any others in the future, should stand alone to support those funds rather than the general fund contributing because, again, for example, the year before last, you were able to work on the non-motorized paths, which was important. So that's an important thing for the residents of Northfield Township. If you don't have general fund monies left because you're putting it into those other funds, you can't do those kinds of things for the residents, which is very important. So I do stress that when you can, you know, try to, you know, use the funds that have been, you know, through the millages of those funds to keep those in those funds, but not transfer large amounts from the general fund, which you have not done, which is good. And then with that, I'd just open up for any questions that the board might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Pfeffer? Would you like to introduce your associate here?
Yes, this is Kristen Pfeffer with the firm Pfeffer-Hanford Falcott. She's a CPA. She's been with us over ten years and been very involved with the audit, many of the audits. So she's coming along for some experience tonight about how to present. I don't know if it's a good job, but, you know, she's here to observe, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. But do we have any questions, Mr. -- Ms. Chick?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you again. We've been doing our audit for many years, and you do a fantastic job, and it's always good news. So really appreciate that. And I want to thank you, Beth Patrick, and Lenore Zellner for their part in it as well.
Thank you.
They're a blessing to us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. Ms. Bellinger.
Mr. Chick basically said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
We enjoy working with you. We've proved to be very good. And I want to thank you, I think, for pointing out that's good work, that's great work, and also the treasurer's good job with the investments and security. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We got a good team, thanks.
So I just have a question, not a question, just a comment. So basically, we have, like, different funds. We have the governmental funds, which is the general fund. And then we have a proprietary fund, which is the wastewater treatment.
Right.
And they, basically, the wastewater treatment comes based on user fees to fund that.
Correct.
And then the general fund gets state review sharing, and millages, just like the police and fire.
Exactly.
So I know you do have these nice little graphs.
Yeah.
About it. So just, and as you said, that we are, we met our goal of having eighty-five percent in our general fund balance, which was actually, we're at ninety percent.
Yeah, that's very good, very important.
Now, that's all of us. And then, just, there was an increase in the planning fees was kind of a...
That's correct.
And that is due to all the items that we have going on as far as we did the master plan, we are updating ordinances, we are working on marijuana ordinance and stuff like that.
That's correct.
So it's been a busy area.
Yep.
That's all. So maybe one day we can have just an understanding of how the sewer fund works, because it is different.
Yeah, definitely. It's considered an enterprise fund. It operates in a way like a business, not to really make a profit, but to, you know, charge the correct fees to pay for all the expenses. But it should also put funds aside so that when you do have repairs and, you know, any upcoming expenses, that you do have funds provided for that. But that is, you know, an enterprise fund.
Because, again, when you look at its fund balance, it has like eleven million dollars, but a lot of that is the assets, meaning the plant.
Yes. Actually, there's a very small part of that that's the operations. I think it's maybe two million dollars, which isn't a huge amount for, you know, to have as a cushion there. But, yeah, it is a much smaller amount.
Yes.
Mr. Dockett.
How long have you been here, Loder? How many years?
You know, I'm not, yeah, I'd say probably fifteen, twenty years.
Everything looks pretty much...
What's that?
Everything looks pretty much the way it...
Yes.
Usually does.
Yeah, and again...
Sorry, I was late.
No, it's okay. I understand.
All right. Well, I'd like to know why we don't have these funds in the sewer fund, in case we have a problem.
Well, again, you could, you'd have to, which I'm not positive in the past, maybe recently you had a study, a sewer study on rates. If you haven't, that's probably something you should do and be looking at, you know, if your rates are covering costs and if you are putting funds away for capital. You definitely should consider looking at that if you haven't.
Well, it seems like we just raised the rates.
Yes.
All right. I don't think that's the answer. Thank you.
Yep, we have had a sewer study, and we have raised the rates based on the sewer study recently, so that's good.
But we're not putting any money away. That's the problem.
That is a problem. And we need to plan for our capital needs. But I do want to...
Saw grant, right?
Saw grant. Well, that will help us plan better for the future. I do have to say, thank you very much for all of the time that you spend here. It seems to go so smoothly. And, you know, I have to say, Ms. Patrick, well, Ms. Starbuck... Got that right. Works very hard, and they're, both her and Lenore are very conscientious as they work on the finances for the township. So I have a great deal of confidence that we're doing well, and you've confirmed that.
Yes.
So thank you so much. Any other...
Yes, I do want to take the opportunity to thank Yvette Starbuck for all the work she does with the audit and helped make that successful, but the everyday work to help us do a better job. So we appreciate all your efforts, and thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Pfeffer, for your diligence and coming in and being, you know, within budget, too. And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
So can I contact you sometime, maybe, for some more...
Yes.
Okay.
No, that's great.
Very information. Thank you.
And then at some point tonight, if you just approve the audit report so we can submit it to the state of Michigan?
Yep, they'll do that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you.
Same to you.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess we could just go ahead and accept the audit report right now, right?
I move to accept the audit report as provided.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger's motion, who Ms. Chick is supporting that. Okay, we have a motion to accept the audit report as presented.
Do we need a roll call?
Let's have a roll call on that.
I'm not asking for it. I'm just asking if we need it.
No, let's just do it. It's money.
I think it's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Let's do a roll call.
Does Selma?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Dockett?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chalkley?
Yes. Thank you. All right, you have a great evening. Take care. Okay. Now we have the opportunity for call to the public. So any member of the public who'd like to come and address the board at this time, feel free. Come on up to the microphone, state your name and your address. Make sure it's turned on and hold it right up to your mouth. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Good evening.
Good evening. Sam Iaquinto, 9876 Main Street. I wanted to thank the board for passing the ordinances in your last meeting. I do believe, as a downtown business owner, the vote that happened shared with the community that people are in favor of this opportunity, especially as a business opportunity for our community. It will bring very good foot traffic, and it will allow, hopefully, a positive economic development. So I am very much in favor of that. But I would encourage you to slow down and not to rush through the procedural process of the application. We have one opportunity to get it right so that we are not rushing through that process and opening the door for potential lawsuits, because the application process that is in your packet is very vague and ambiguous. And I feel that it is a lawsuit waiting to happen, so I would encourage you to take your time and please go through the procedures for the business permits and get them very detailed and in a fashion that does not open the door to lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay.
Adam Olney, Whitmore Lake resident. I'm here to speak on behalf of some residents who are looking for some reimbursement on some damages that were on their house for sewer backup. If you need to do what's right for the homeowner, if any of you had these same issues in this same house, you would be up here asking for the same thing. You guys brag about being fiscally responsible and having this fund balance, and it is for things like this. You need to take care of the people. I know Mr. Willis has said, or Mr. Ains, about not being legally held liable for this, but they've been out there three times. And it's obviously not on the homeowner's fault, all three times. It's been on the township's end. And I really hope the township does what's right with this and takes care of these homeowners and their financial burden. It's one of the nicer subs in this community. I mean, we literally just had a four-bedroom, two-bath house listed for three-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. So, I mean, we don't want to be listing houses in our subdivision with, you know, having to list them like they have sewer damage in the basement because the township didn't take care of it, or because the township didn't reimburse it. Now people are selling them at a greatly reduced price because of this problem. So I just, I hope you guys do what's right. Other townships pay these out often when it's on their end, even though they're not legally responsible to do so. And the same, I think, what Sam said, make sure you got everything in place here. Obviously, everyone on this board knows where I stand with it, but, I mean, we could be facing lawsuits. Right now, you have people looking to put a marijuana business in Seventy-Five Barker, which I would support, but you also know that you have someone wanting to put one in in Family Video. And if it's just a first come, first served, or whoever gets it in first, you might be facing some lawsuits. So I want to move forward it, but I want to be responsible about it as well. So we'll see you at the second call.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Kim Thompson.
You have to hold it right up to your mouth.
Hi, my name is Kim Thompson. I live at Ninety-three Oh Seven Lakewood Court. The neighbors are the ones who had the sewage problems as well. And I agree that we should, you know, move forward with reimbursing them. It proposed health and wellness. I mean, this family has two small children, and they had to be displaced. It affected our neighbor. I mean, it very well could have affected my house. I work in property management. I had the same thing happen to a property that I oversee in Brighton, and sixteen people were displaced, and the community decided to go ahead and reimburse us for that damage. Granted, I mean, it's a lot of money, but, I mean, this is a family that's in our community. We need to stand with them and support them, because, like I said, it could happen to any of us. I guess my question is, we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence and making sure that those lines are being cleared, if not annually, maybe biannually, and making sure that that doesn't happen. I mean, because I don't know if anything has been rectified after this, but three times, that means there's something wrong with the lines. And I don't know if the township has went and looked, but, I mean, this family is not going to be able to sell their home, because they're going to have to put that on disclosure. So, and they are recent homeowner. They just bought this house within the last two years. So I just want you guys to take that into consideration when you're making your final decision. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Craig Warburton. I live at Four-Fifty West Joy Road. Back to the issue of August twelfth, not necessarily specifics, but more the process that took place. I filed the FOIA request for emails between three of you specific to that meeting and the language of the ballot. The township waited five days to respond, and at that point told me it would take ten more days for a response to come, because they were gathering information. And when the response came, it said it was being held for attorney-client privilege. I might remind Madam Supervisor that she read those documents in the midst of the call to the public at that August twelfth meeting, and then followed it a little later in the meeting with action by the board to remove the attorney-client privilege from that topic. I understand my point of appeal is the township board. I don't know if that means I need to email all of you at the same time. I really am a little hesitant to just email Madam Supervisor, because I think there's a question of impartiality that still looms in my head. So when you give your comments, if you could, let me know if you're accepting this as my formal appeal of that determination to withhold those emails based on a conflict of interest, I'd be appreciative. Otherwise, I'll submit it in writing. I think it's interesting, in a township of four thousand, fairly pleasant people living in what's for all intents and purposes a resort or farming community, that every time you ask a question of your government, you get treated like you're the enemy. Why did it take five days to say, "We really don't want to answer this"? It certainly didn't take ten days to come to the conclusion to deny me. It's playing a time game. And, you know, we're all sort of on the same side. We want to have a happy little life here in Northfield Township. And sort of along the same lines, the second partially filled FOIA had some information about the attorney and bills and invoices, and I couldn't make head nor tail of the word retainer. So as you put that out for a request for quotation, I hope you'll insist on some kind of general accounting practices and some specificity as to how that retainer gets eaten away every month to the exact amount of five thousand dollars. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on up, sir. Or, Ma, Ma.
Hi, my name is Pat Welsh. I'm at Nine-Two-Four-Two Lakewood Drive. And I'm speaking on behalf of the family that's dealing with the sewer issues. In the last two weeks, I've dealt with a sump pump that blew and filled my basement with water, which I know is totally my responsibility. But it gives me some sense of the horror that this family is going through and having to deal with tens of thousands of dollars in damages. And I guess, I don't know that it can be answered here, but I'm really wondering why something can't be done to help this family. As the former speaker mentioned, they're really dead in the water, in a house that would never sell even if they wanted it to. And that it's happened repeatedly really does speak to something that's outside of the homeowner's control. So I would ask on behalf of that family and anyone else that might run into this situation to please reconsider the stand on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to board member response to call to the public. Do we have any board members who would like to respond to any of the members of the public who spoke tonight? Mr. Dockett.
I would like to know if there was any problem with the sewers at that house from the previous owner, if they've only been there two years, that the previous owner have a problem. That was one of my questions. The other one was, I know what it's like. I did a FOIA a couple of weeks ago, and I'm still waiting for a part of it. So I don't think the township takes it that seriously. I think they would have so many days to give me the information. They did do a good job on what I got, but I didn't get what I asked for. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No?
Yeah, so we'll be talking about the sewer. So we'll save my comments for that, as well as the marijuana permit when it comes on the agenda.
And I'll mention about the retainer. A retainer is a set fee for certain services throughout the month, and it's the same, doesn't matter what month it is, but it handles phone calls that we make to Mr. Burns. Or we, I don't even know, we must have a retainer for our planner also. I think we do. But anyway, it's a common, it's a common thing. So that's where the retainer goes. And it's split up among our departments based on, you know, how much usage it would get over time.
I didn't hear anything about a retainer.
Mr. Warburton mentioned the retainer.
Sorry, I missed it.
Associated with the FOIA that he requested. Okay. Ms. Manley.
Again, just to address the FOIA from Mr. Warburton, I know that went through, I'm assuming the manager, and we just follow the attorney guidelines. So if you want to follow up, you know, with Steven or Jennifer to see what the processes that they took, that's what I would suggest.
I agree. Go ahead, Ms. Selma.
If I may, I do actually have some announcements, but I prefer to do it more at the beginning where people are still here. Just a reminder that the winter tax bills will be available on December first, which actually is a Sunday. So we will expect payments starting like December second on a Monday. You certainly can drop them in the Dropbox office, but do be aware that we cannot accept payments legally before December first. So we've had people come to the office trying to pay it, but we cannot legally accept it. The warrant is issued to start on December first. So the next thing is, I'd like to take a moment and thank Mr. Burns for his years of service with us. I know that you and I have worked on several documents that have come before the board, and you have been successful getting big organizations to change legal agreements so that we are protected. So I do appreciate that. As difficult as times have been of recent, and you have been in the heat of it, I do have confidence that your opinions were always made to protect the township, and I do appreciate that, even though they may not be popular at times. So I thank you for your service. I personally will miss you, working with you, and your institutional knowledge will be very hard to replace that you have with our township. So thank you very much.
Ms. Chick.
I just wanted to let Mr. and Mrs. Spina know that we've been getting almost daily updates on everything that's going on with your issue. The entire board's aware and getting, continuing to get information, and we're still looking for more information, but intend to handle this the best way possible for everybody. So a very, very unfortunate situation that you have. I do not envy you at all. I know that it's problematic, so we will, excuse me, discuss it. And for Mr. Olney, your question about the first come, first served, that's going to be part of our discussion farther on down the road. I think you might have a little bit different interpretation of what it means, so. And Mr. Burns, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda. And I, after discussion with some of the board members, I will pull number four, which is the inclusion of an additional planning commissioner to the North Village Subcommittee. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda minus number four. Motion by Chalkley, do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Manley. Go ahead, Ms. Bellinger.
There's a question on the minutes.
Okay.
So I want to look at those as well.
Yep. Okay.
And I would like to pull a couple correspondence. I would like to pull Dr. Griffith's correspondence and talk about that at Seventy-Five Barker. I would also like to pull Mr. Gordon's correspondence so that either we can add that to an agenda item maybe at our next meeting. So I'd like to talk about that briefly.
Okay, well, let's deal with those quickly then, at this point. What changes might you have to the minutes, Ms. Bellinger?
I saw something that was, let's see, which one was it here? I saw something that was, let's see, which one was it here? There was a vote that was, ended up adding up to not being the right number. Yeah, the number is one thing, but the number of people who voted were not, it was a 5-2. Where did I have that? I don't know, I outlined it. Yeah, number eight. Motion number eight on page number two. I don't know if the vote was 2 to 5 or 3 to 4, but we have 2 to 5, but then we only have 1, 2, 3, 4 Board Members opposed, so that's the discrepancy.
You're correct.
And I don't know if it's a 3 to 4 or if it's a 2 to 5 and we're missing a person.
With number eight, because your name is missing from the vote knows.
Under number eight, there does show three people that opposed, Lender, Manley, and Chalkley.
On page two. Page two. On the right-hand side, motion number eight, near the bottom.
Okay. Okay. Yeah? We can, we'll review that for certain then. Ms. Bellinger? With the tape.
I did not review it.
I know. We can do that with, you know, to add the name or change the number. It failed anyways.
That needs to be corrected, whatever it is.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Chick.
Yeah, I just had a couple typos on the first page and on the third page, so I might just send those to Ms. Lippens because she's not here to change them anymore.
Okay. And those two typos were?
Second column on the first page, under motion number two. It should say, "Ains and Lippens provide the Board with application, administrative procedures, and forms," with a S.
Okay.
And then the next sentence, it says marijuana businesses in the township in at least draft should be in a last draft.
Okay. And your changes on page three?
Page three, first column, last paragraph, she just has "Ben," B-E-N-E, it should be B-E-N. Second line from the bottom.
Oh, okay. That's all? Okay, thank you. And on the first page, I would say at the first dot after the request of chief, I mean, request of Board Members to Chief Wagner, I guess. Oh, "at the request of Board Members, comma, Chief Wagner explained." Okay. And then it's "perfluoroalkyl substances" instead of "perfluoroalkylloxylalkane." So anyway, I did look it up, so that can get tricky. Okay, any other changes on the minutes? Mr. Dockett.
Yes, second column, first page, or the third one up from the bottom. I had noticed that the recording secretary could not bring herself to say that the insurance went up $17,000. I don't know why she can't put that in there. The way she's got it phrased, the cost of the insurance for the health insurance policy was added to the minutes. Well, what the hell does that tell us? Doesn't tell us that it's up $17,000. So I don't know why she didn't put it in there. She did the same thing on page two.
Okay.
I would like to have it.
Okay.
I've made a point of that for the last two meetings.
It was probably corrected on the minutes that was amended.
Well, it might have been, but I don't get to see the minutes after they're corrected. So I have no idea if I did. How would I know?
Okay, are you sure it's $17,000?
We said, we said it was a.
Approximately $17,000. Okay, we will make that correction to these ones then.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'd like to tell the people what's happening here.
Okay. Any more corrections to the minutes?
Yes. So if we go to page two, motion number four, this is quite a lengthy one, but it actually started, I think, at 2 minutes and 10 minutes into the meeting, and finally was completed at 2 minutes and 41 minutes into the meeting because of all the other motions that were made afterwards. But anyway, it should include the RTM, Technology Manufacturing District, and exclude the four new businesses under the emergency rules.
Okay. I am.
That was mentioned in the minutes. I didn't read that. That was mentioned, the RTM and the moving of the.
But that was actually part of motion number four. Ms. Chick repeated it multiple times, and like I said, it started at 2 minutes and 10, or 2 minutes and 10 seconds into the meeting and then, or 2 hours and 10, and then finally got wrapped up, 2 and 41, so I could see how it got wrong.
Okay. So can you, can you give the precise language that it should be?
Sure, it should include the Research Technology RTM Manufacturing District and exclude the four new businesses under the emergency, state emergency rules.
And where is that? Supposed to be under motion four?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying that was all done as one motion?
That's correct.
You mean, motion three and four were supposed to be combined?
No.
This is part of motion four, two.
At the very end, after everything was gone through for several minutes, we repeated the entire motion to include RTM and preclude or exclude the four. Yes.
And it just wasn't done.
And it was read back to us?
Yes, it was sort of read back, yes. But again, it was like 30 minutes later.
Well, the problem being with motion four is there's no vote.
Right.
No, no, you keep going. Keep going. That's the trouble.
It's right at the top of eight, right over eight.
No, yeah, run to number three. Yeah. Oh, okay. That was the trouble. We made all these other motions in between.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they were all attempts for amending.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Those were my comments.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful. Okay, any other changes to the minutes? Okay, we'll set those aside to adopt in a moment.
And so what do you want to do about Mr. Gordon's correspondence? Are we?
Let's pull it out and. Okay. "I offered to be around on December 3rd from 5:30 to 7:00. If anybody wants to come in here to talk about anything, I'll be here December 3rd from 5:30 to 7:00."
Well, then we should set up a special meeting then.
Well, I'll be here. If there's enough other Board Members, we will call it a special meeting just for.
December 3rd?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a Tuesday. I think we should really have an agenda on our December 10th. I'd like to hear from the public. Here's what we're talking about. I don't want to keep, treat the public like they're the enemies, as Mr. Warburton might have said in his, and answer questions. I don't know if it should be, you know, I want to get the public's idea of when would be a good day? Would it be a special meeting on a Tuesday? Another, or meeting? Would it be to start maybe at 6:30 before our meetings? Would a Saturday be better? Or are people not interested at all? But I would like to get some input on the public of going to a question and answer, so instead of just coming to the call to the public, that we actually talk about some of your concerns and respond. And we might, again, have, may even think about having a moderator, but I think it would be good to get input from the public on if they're interested, what would work for them, what days, what time, how much time, how often.
I think quarterly is reasonable, and like I said, I know there's probably some hot topics that people want to talk about, and I'm willing to come in next Tuesday if anybody else wants to. That's great. Otherwise, you know, the Board can decide. We can do it whenever you want. Yeah, yeah, let's, yeah, can we discuss it?
Add it to our agenda next meeting.
I would like to add it at the top of the agenda and hopefully get, we might have marijuana back on, so we'll have a lot of people.
To actually have it as an agenda, answer and question.
No, to answer, I just wanted as an agenda item to talk about the format and how the public would like to. So maybe at that point on the agenda item, we'll actually answer questions, meaning talk about it and have feedback, and that's what I would like, that's my proposal, is to add it as an agenda item. Hopefully, the public will come and give their input.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
Okay. Three years ago, when we started establishing this Board, we originally said that we planned on holding Town Hall meetings or whatever you want to call them, and do them quarterly, and we have not. And I understand Mr. Gordon's concern about this, that we offered it, but we never did it. So I think we need to schedule it, advise the public when it is going to be, and let them come if they have questions. And I think it might be better, as opposed to us sitting here and making it really formal. It's a little more comfortable if just do, you know, sitting around and be very, we would have to have a moderator because you would, don't want people asking questions at the same time, but it's a little more intimate. And I think, you know, whatever, somebody wants to ask a question, any one of us or all of us, we can do that, but we need to schedule it.
Yeah, that's my concern, is if we don't schedule it and we just have it as, I'll show up next Tuesday, and then we have more than three Board Members show up. It's a meeting.
Yeah, we can post it.
And we needed to post it.
We can totally post it. It only takes 18 hours. So I was going to have Jennifer send out something, and I'll hang out here next Tuesday, but we can certainly choose a day quarterly and do it. I'm concerned about us doing something like this prior to the December 10th meeting, just because we're going to have a heavy agenda on December 10th, and we, and we're going to talk about it, and I'm considering possibly we may need a special meeting ahead of time. So that would kind of preclude having it prior to our meeting. So December 10th is not the best day, but probably the second meeting in January could work, huh? Ms. Bellinger?
Are you referring to the second meeting in January to place it on the agenda?
No, to actually have.
Okay, because if we're going to do something like this, I think it would be appropriate to have it during already scheduled meeting day, maybe a half hour, 45 minutes before the regular meeting begins. So call it either early or actually start it at 7:00 and have the regular meeting start at 7:45 or something.
Okay.
That way, it's not an extra day that we'll have to coordinate and try to be here.
Right. Okay, well, let's talk about it at our next meeting.
I would like to say, we should start our regular meeting at 7:00, so that's what time we start them. Maybe we could make it 6 o'clock or 7:00.
So let's, let's make a proposal next week, and we'll figure, figure a date out for that. Well, that's okay. I mean, the next meeting.
And December 10th.
December 10th. Right. Okay.
And I would encourage the public to, and maybe Ms. Carlyle can send something out so we get some feedback about, you know, the days, the times, if it's before, after, special meeting or not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for pulling that out. And we have Ms. Griffith's note pulled out for 75 Barker, so we can add that to that. I hope you all had a chance to read my Supervisor Report and Ms. Griffith's report on the MDA Conference. There's a lot of good information there that can help our downtown. So I'll let that go. All right, and I've pulled that. Okay, so we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as amended, motion by Chalkley and support by Manley. Do we have any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, 7-0. All right. And the reason I pulled the additional Planning Commissioner, because it appears that there's potentially not enough time to get another Planning Commissioner on, and we do have Ms. Chick who is on the Planning Commission, and that was a suggestion by the DDA. And if that isn't going to be helpful, then it isn't going to be helpful. Ms. Chick?
Well, that was my question, is what would be the benefit? And the North Village Subcommittee's been going on for quite a while now. Adding another member at this point, I don't know that it would be helpful, or what was the purpose of adding another member to the Subcommittee as a benefit? What would be the benefit?
Yes, and the only, the only, the discussion at the DDA centered around providing an additional Planning Commissioner's perspective on what might be helpful in the site planner negotiations of the North Village Development.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's probably not a Planning Commissioner's job or position, that's what our planner is for. And if you've got two Planning Commission Members, which would be myself and someone else, it might look like influence when whatever development comes towards the Planning Commission, so that was my concern.
Okay.
Who's from, on the, who's from the Planning Commission now that's on that?
Only Jennifer.
So you have a total of six people?
Yes, three DDA Members and three Board Members, and Mr. Lippens, and Mr. Ains. Okay. So anyway, so I know that wasn't going to fly, so it's pulled.
Can I understand, is this for, they're writing a planning commission? They're trying to add somebody? There are seven members?
Is for the North Village Subcommittee? They want to add another planning commission?
That would be like somebody saying, add another person on the Board.
Okay. All right. I would like to make, oh, okay, so we voted on that. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as distributed.
I'll support.
Support.
Motion by Chalkley, support by Manley. Any, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, 7-0. Okay, the first agenda item is the update on sewer backups. And you all have in your packet Mr. Ains' memo. Do you have more information for us, Mr. Ains?
As I've discussed with the Board, it's been a series of items coming in, the latest being that I had secured the report by the independent appraiser, and I had that ready to distribute to the Board, but I guess you wanted more time to see it than to have it given to you right before the meeting. I do have that available. I have no problem with the Board authorizing me to pass it on to Mr. and Mrs. Spina for their review as well. But basically, what it does is it says, "In the event that there is a liability on behalf of the Board or on the Township," then he's analyzing what the legitimate costs would be. But it gets back to the original issue of when the state law was passed to make communities essentially immune from this type of thing, that the insurance company is saying, based on their investigation, that we had no foreknowledge, and there was nothing that we could identify that had caused the problem, and therefore, they are not going to pay anything towards any sort of settlement. And so in the event that you chose to do so, that would be at the Township's cost, not through the insurance company's cost. You had asked me if I could get a representative from the insurance company to come to the meeting. This was too short a notice, but the insurance rep that we have is available for the meeting on the 10th of December, if you wish him to come. But basically, what he's going to be doing is explaining the same thing, that, you know, under the state law, that there were restrictions placed on this. And if you've watched the news at all, especially downriver in the Detroit area, you've had occasions where you've had hundreds of homes that have backed up, and this was one of the reasons why the state legislature many years ago had put this in effect. But, so if you do it once, you're basically opening the door for doing it again, is their viewpoint, because essentially, the insurance will not cover. is their viewpoint, because essentially the insurance will not cover you anytime that you go beyond what that law provides, but that's at your discretion, and, you know, I can go ahead and ask him to come if you want me to.
Ms. Chick has her hand up first.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Willis, could you give us a chronology of what happened and why it continued to happen even after it was supposedly fixed the first time?
We don't know where, we suspect the school down on Barker sent something down the line two different times. We talked to the maintenance people after the second backup and they said that the month, two months prior, which put us in September, and then a month later they had sewer backup at the school that they cleared with Roto-Rooter and sent it down the line, and that corresponds when our sewer backed up both times.
So, for the audience, could you explain exactly what the blockage is?
It was accumulation of rags and debris that kids probably flushed down the line of the school.
And the sewer blocked?
So the school jetted their lines and forced all this stuff down the line?
That's what we think.
Did they, you don't jet their lines, they do their own maintenance, is that how?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
So what was the date that you suspect that it was done, you said in September, and then they did another one afterwards?
Yes, in October.
In October.
We don't have exact dates when they did it, and it might, they might have pushed it down the line and it set for a week or a couple of days before it finally got pushed the rest of the way down the line.
So do we have any agreement with the school that when they do this kind of maintenance, that they contact the wastewater treatment plant?
We have a verbal agree with them now, just like a homeowner would send somebody, something down the line and plug our line up, it's the same thing. This line has been in there for twenty-five years, if you looked on the TV, the recording that we did, it looks just the same as it did twenty-five years ago when it was new, it's just sometimes stuff happens and gets pushed down the line, we have no control over that.
So a lot of it is the disposable things that aren't really disposable that they should be putting down, even though they say they are?
Probably, probably, I mean, it could have been somebody flushed a diaper or something down there, you know, you never know what somebody puts down the line.
And I know you found chunks of concrete at one point.
The first time, it probably would have went on down the line, but there was a block from the manhole when they raised the manholes when they did the sidewalk, and that's what caught it the first time.
Okay.
So the concrete that you found in the hole may have been caused by the sidewalk that we did?
Yeah, it was a manhole block, it was, it sat there for twenty-five years before that was done and nothing was ever blocked there, so that's what we think happened, we'll never know exactly how everything came about, you can never know.
Mr. Ducker?
Just a question, maybe the sewer's been on for twenty-five years when they built it, but when we put the sidewalk in, the new sidewalk, they had to raise the manhole down, so it was twenty-five years ago, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, I just, you misspoke there, when you said, it's been there for twenty-five years, because I don't know how long ago it was, but...
The sewer's been there twenty-five years.
Yes, I understand that, but we worked, the township had the manhole raised, they hired somebody to come in to raise the manhole when they put in the new sidewalk, is that correct?
No, it was part of the contract, we did not contract somebody to raise that.
Well, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, that's when the block, where else would the sewer block come from? So the contractor who the township hired came and raised the manhole up to where it would be, even with the sidewalk?
Correct.
Left the block in there?
Yes.
Nobody checked it out, nobody knew it was there, nobody inspected afterwards, and I'm not blaming it, I'm not, it just, that's the way it is. So to me, I would think that pretty much that's what happened, now to just think about, well, maybe after the block was out, maybe it's the school, well, maybe it is the school, but, you know, we don't know, right?
Well, if, if, the block was there two years before we had the block, the blockage, so it might have, if the school didn't push something down the line, it still might be fine, so.
Well, I, I know they made a rule that we're not responsible, but I think when, when we charge somebody sixty, if they're within two hundred feet of the line, you must hook up or you can't get a building permit, we charge you sixty-five hundred bucks for their boats, and we charge you three hundred and sixty a year, we do have some responsibility here as far as I'm concerned, but I'm one vote, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Otto?
So that's what I wanted to find out, is who is responsible for the continued maintenance of those lines and when are they maintained?
We are responsible for maintaining the lines, we've been daily checking them to look for blockages, but we did TV the line from the school all the way down to twenty-three there, and didn't find anything else in the line.
And how about prior to all this, how often did we maintain the lines?
We had not ever had problems with that line and we never jetted it or anything.
I know there's been change in, well, I don't know, change, people have been putting these flushable wipes down that are not flushable, and I know that Mr. Willis keeps pulling pumps out and having to clean out what, rags, so you, you talk about pulling pumps out and cleaning out the rags all the time?
Correct.
In your report, and those must be those flushable wipes that are getting put down toilets?
Yeah, every community deals with these.
Yep, and, and then those can collect fats, you know, so then they can become what are called fatbergs, you know, instead of icebergs, but they can be very difficult over time, because they get larger and larger, that's not something that, that wastewater treatment can deal with, it's, it's a behavioral problem that we have out there with the public and, and with the people that make those flushable wipes, they are not flushable, they do not degrade, and so I don't know how you get around that, we put an article in our newsletter, one of our quarterly newsletters, or, no, twice-a-year newsletters, telling people, don't flush these things, I don't know if that's made any difference, but obviously now we've had some problems with the backups in these pipes, and I, and I can't say that it's the township's fault.
It's on every sewer bill, it's printed on the sewer bill.
We should print it on the sewer bill, that would be great, yes, we should print it on every sewer bill. It is, don't flush the wipes, okay, well, yeah, so, anyway, I don't know what to say about this, I, I understand.
If you've got a sewer bill, you know that.
Okay, I understand the frustration, okay, it's, it's, it's something that you wouldn't expect, but it, I believe that the homeowners should file with their insurance company, and I think that, I can't imagine them denying it.
They will.
Why?
Because the school did what they did and we did what we did with the manhole.
I can't imagine, I mean, they should file, and if they're turned down, they're turned down.
Do we have a complete, a complete cost of all the expenses?
We do, okay. Yeah.
We do.
So I, at this point, legally, we don't have culpability in this one, but, you know, we, it would be helpful to have Mr. Koenig here to, to talk about our insurer, and, so, Ms. Bellinger?
A couple of questions, I'm not quite understanding the whole thing about a, a concrete block that was used to elevate, to raise up the manhole cover, that, was that evidently, was that loose, did that end up in a location it shouldn't have been? Is this part of an issue, is one thing, and I got more after that, please?
During the construction, they must have dropped it down in there and never retrieved it, that's what we think.
Okay, and the next thing is, I, I would certainly think that I would ask the insurance company, the homeowners' insurance company to look at this, I mean, right now, they're not paying it, but you don't know if you don't ask, and the third point is, if it ends up being a situation where the insurance, their insurance company doesn't want to cover it, I, I think it would be good for the community to put together a, a possible way to raise some funds to help this family out.
You have a question, go ahead, Ms. Zelnak?
Quite a few, so actually, I mean, I have empathy with the residents on this, our fiduciary responsibility is to protect the township as a whole, so before Mr. Burns leave, I have a request for him, and I would like to probably make a motion that he give us a legal opinion, if we pay this, are we liable to pay every sewer backup that happens? You don't have to do it now, because there's repercussions for that, because if we do, then we need to ask our auditor what kind of contingent liability he'll need to put on our books, and how much money that will be, and how he'll figure that out. And if we do that, then we'll need to contact our, depending on the amount, contact our bond counsel to see if that impacts our bond rating or potentially our borrowing rates, so I think it's, we have some critical questions that need to be answered so that we know by making this decision one way or the other, the impact it's going to have on the health of our community as a whole, because if we look at our financial statements, we have about two million dollars in the sewer, if we had a hundred of these claims, we would, we would have no money left, and when Horseshoe Lakes flood and the sewers back up, are we responsible for that as well? And the other thing is, I think people need to understand is that there is a process, it doesn't follow the MCL, which is the Michigan compiled law, we as a township would be going against that, it doesn't follow the public act, we would be going against that as well, and we, and we had a sewer backup earlier this year, and in March twelfth, in the meeting, Mr. Ains said he submitted it to the township's insurance company for the deductible of the homeowners' insurance, and we were deemed responsible for that, it was our fault, so the process isn't always one way and always in favor of the township, but there is a process, we need to make sure we understand the liability if we go forward with this for the township as a whole, and the implications it will have on the financial stability of the township, and I don't have those answers right now.
Just to elaborate on the last comment, you've only had one other case since I've been here in two and a half years, and in that case, originally, we thought we were not liable, because Dan didn't have any record of having that been reported to us, but as part of this SOL grant, this asset management plan, some of the records had been loaned to the engineering firm to review, and when they came back, Dan was able to see where it had been reported, there was supposed to be some effort to clean it up, and that had not been done by the township, and that's where it became an issue that we would pay for the deductible.
Right, Ms. Manley?
Yeah, question on either Dan or Mr. Ains, so if the manhole cover was what we thought was an issue, could we go back and address whoever did that?
I wasn't involved in construction of the sidewalk, I have no idea.
Do we know who put that sidewalk in, I mean?
The engineering group we talked to about it is Mr. Rubel's group, they're, the last one, I mean, the last one we had on it was our present engineer, and he had indicated that it was too long ago, there was too much time between when this incident happened and when that did to draw a correlation between the two.
Okay, and I, kind of the same as, kind of what other people are saying, you know, go to the insurance company and see what they do have to say, are they going to deny it, and then at that point, you know, maybe address it again, because that's, you know, that's what the homeowners' insurance should do, they should cover you in those situations.
Yeah.
Do we have correspondence of that? We're getting bits and pieces, so, that's just like, yeah, so, yeah.
We have contacted them about making another claim on our homeowners' insurance, they have told us that there is a cap on a sewage claim, so our cap is ten grand, that's all they will give us, no matter if it's fifty grand of damage, no matter if it's ten grand of damage, that's all we get, the reason why we're coming to you is because it doesn't even cover the cleaning bill from the second incident, they also told us that if we do make a claim, it's going to raise our rates five hundred and thirteen dollars a year for the next five years, so that's also another burden that is being put on us for an issue that is not our fault, it is out of our hands, and I know you keep blaming it on the wipes, but there was also something down in the sewer lines that was not supposed to be down there, it was not maintained, and it became a problem, we bought the house in November of two thousand seventeen, that's when you guys just finished that sidewalk, it's been exactly two years, and in two months, the past two months, we have had three backups.
Are you the low point, Dan, is that why it's chosen?
Yes, they're the first, we're the backup, yes.
So you can provide us the letter or whatever you have from your insurance company or your insurance documents so that we can take a look at that?
Okay.
Okay?
I would like all the information too, that your insurance company is asking you to, that they're asking you, your premiums will increase due to that?
Absolutely, and they also said, just because we file a claim doesn't mean it will be accepted.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right, well, that would be helpful.
I would like to at this time make a motion that we have an agreement drafted between us and the schools, that when maintenance with the sewer line is either ordered or performed, that the township is notified prior to such work order, and that the township inspect the work to be done prior to the work being started.
I'll support.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Bellinger to have an agreement with the school to inform the township prior to doing work?
Yeah, prior to ordering the work to be performed?
Okay.
And that the township is not, township has the right to inspect the work that is ordered to be done.
Should we say township sewer department?
Yeah.
Yeah, the wastewater treatment plant, between the schools and wastewater treatment plant.
So you're putting on wastewater treatment?
All I'm asking for is a draft at this time.
Okay, draft of an agreement, okay.
That we can propose to the school.
Okay, yep, all right, everybody understand this motion well enough, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, that passes, seven zero, okay.
So I guess I need to make a motion to have Mr. Burns give us a legal opinion, if the township would be liable to pay all sewer backup claims submitted by the homeowners regardless if we are liable or not.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Ms. Zelnak, support by Ms. Otto, to have Mr. Burns let us know if we will have to pay all insurance, well, state it again.
So I would like a legal opinion for our attorney if the township would be liable to pay all sewer... if the township would be liable to pay all sewer backup claims submitted by homeowners regardless if we are liable or not, according to the MCL and the public act.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call vote.
Okay, we have a motion by Zelnak and support by Otto.
So this is to ask Mr. Burns if we would then have to pay everybody sewer backup bills?
Uh huh.
Correct.
She, she's, if we pay it, if we're setting precedent?
Oh, yeah, of course. It seemed like a no brainer, that's what it would be.
I just want, I want to know.
So the question is, is this setting precedent, basically?
How do we pick and choose that we pay your deductible, we don't pay you at all, we pay your full cost? That's my concern, and I'd like to know a legal opinion. Are we now held liable for all sewer backups?
All right, I guess we will have a roll call on this one.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Chick? Manley, yes. Docket?
Yes.
Zellner?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes. That passes 7-0. Okay, and I would like to make a motion to postpone any decision on this item pending, I mean, until the next meeting. And hopefully, we'll have some information from Mr. Burns.
Well, actually, we should just have it on the next agenda, so we know where we're at.
Yep.
So I do have, you know, if, depending on what Mr. Burns come back and says, then, you know, we will have to ask our auditor what the contingent liability would be. And then, I think it would be prudent after that, depending on the liability. If it's maybe 100,000 it would be, but if it was, I don't know, we'd have to ask our auditor how much, and then going from there, if it would impact any bond items, interest rates that we would go out and borrow, having that contingent liability. Again, it would depend on the amount.
Well, this might take us more than two weeks to get any, so.
Could we get that information prior to, at the same time that Mr. Burns is doing this?
Yeah, I mean, we could probably ask Mr. Pfeiffer if he would, you know, give us what he would think would be an estimate.
Okay. I think if we do the due diligence all at the same time, we'd be a little bit ahead.
You know, that if we do it.
Is there a question that we should ask Mr. Burns now while he's here?
Well, he might have to look into it. Or, you know, if he's comfortable giving us a legal opinion. Or maybe this is appropriate to have in a closed session at some point, right? Possibly. Okay.
In the meantime, I can check with Mr. Pfeiffer, see if there's anything he can do to look ahead.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, well, let's get all that lined up, and then we'll have it back on the agenda as soon as it's ready. Okay, so if everyone's amenable to that, we don't really have to have a motion. Okay, item number two. I'd like to make a motion to, this is ordinance 1971, to amend the prohibition of marijuana establishment ordinance to extend the sunset clause until December 21st, 2019, to coincide with the marijuana zoning ordinance and marijuana permitting ordinance effective dates. So I will make a motion to do so. Can I get a second? No?
Support.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed the motion.
Motion by Chockley, support by Bellinger to move the sunset clause of ordinance 1862, the prohibition of marijuana establishment ordinance, to extend it to December 21st, 2019. So this will actually be ordinance 1971.
Why are we extending that?
Publication error.
Excuse me?
It was a publication error. It was intended to be in the newspaper, the Sunday after our last meeting, and then there was a problem with the Ann Arbor News accepting it because this is a different kind of a display, and so it got pushed off. Not by our fault, but it was just an error.
Oh. Who made that error? The newspaper or the township?
Well, it was a complication. Mr. Aines, would you like to describe what happened?
My assistant had contacted the newspaper, described what we needed, told them when we needed it, was assured it would be published on the Sunday following the board's action, and then found out on Monday that it had not been published, and then it got pushed off to the following Thursday. So it's a delay of about six, seven days, maybe less.
And didn't that have to do with the size of the content?
Yeah, they were treating it as if it was the full-page ad that you have to do for ordinances. And all we were asking for was a much smaller ad that just gave the summary of what the ordinance was.
So it doesn't change anything, except?
It just pushes it out?
Yeah, okay. All right, okay, fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so, motion to approve ordinance 1971 by Chockley and support by Bellinger. I guess we'll have a roll call vote on that, please.
Manley, yes. Otto?
No.
Zellner?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Chick? Bellinger?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes. Thank you. That passes 5-2.
So my concern on this is that by December 21st, I don't even think we're going to be ready. So we're going to have to have this on the agenda again for the 21st to probably extend it even further.
Mr. Burns, can you explain this point, why the 21st works?
As I understand it, the marijuana ordinance is being published this Thursday? Last Thursday. So under the law, after 30 days after the publication, it goes into effect. And so you want the opt-out to expire on the same day that the marijuana ordinance goes into effect. And so one expires and one goes into place.
Does that mean that we're accepting applications on that day?
Well, that's a different question.
Okay, that's what I mean.
But my point is.
That was my reason for no, because I don't think we'll be ready on December 21st.
You don't want to have one ordinance in place holding up the zoning ordinance and one ordinance that's already been adopted going into legal effect.
Okay.
It doesn't require us to take applications at that point, though, just because our ordinance is in effect, correct?
No, you're going to discuss the application procedure tonight.
I mean, the way the application procedure was written, it's written as it would go into effect on the 21st. And I think that we need to give it more time. That's why I didn't agree to this. I didn't, I said no, because I figure we needed more time. But if all we're doing is just adding to the ordinance, aligning the ordinance with the sunset and the ordinance together, I'm fine.
Would you prefer to change your vote?
No, I'm fine.
You're good, okay.
That still passed.
It passed, okay. Okay. Yes.
So are we, Mr. Lippens, I guess, I don't know if I got a straight answer to that. So if this goes into effect the 21st, do we have to start taking applications on the 21st?
What are you talking about?
Mr. Burns responded to that question. He said the application is a separate. Mr. Burns responded to that question. He said it's a separate agenda item to talk about the application procedures.
Okay, so if we accept this application procedure, or if we do not accept this application procedure, and this goes into effect on the 21st, what happens?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Burns.
Busy man before he leaves.
So best practice is for, as soon as the ordinance goes into effect, you should have an administrative procedure in place to accept applications right away, which we understand would be the day after Christmas, the 26th. And so that's what Paul's prepared, I think, is an application procedure to be in place for the 26th.
A Christmas present.
I guess, I don't know, maybe I'm a little bit frustrated. If we knew this was going to be an issue with the dates, why are we just talking about this now? Wasn't this, why wasn't this brought up ahead of time? Or did I miss something?
Well, if I could respond.
I think it was, but I thought we would be further along.
Okay.
Well, this came up to some degree last meeting, but as I look at articles for other communities like Grand Rapids and Ann Arbor and so on, they have timeframes that go out to later than when they first implement it. For instance, when I read about Grand Rapids, they were talking, it was passed, but it was going to go in effect taking applications. I think it was in April. So you do have some timeframe, even though maybe the best practice would be that way. At the last meeting, the board indicated that you were concerned that Mr. Lippens and I had not developed this further. However, at the September meeting, the board had discussed whether to put a time limit on developing those administrative procedures. And according to the minutes, you did not put a date on it. At the same time, you had the referendum coming up for the election, and the board had indicated on the ordinances that you didn't want action taken beyond that because you didn't want to incur additional expenses for the planning consultant if it had been stopped by the election. And so if you think back to it, the board has said that we need to have things by 3 o'clock on Tuesday. Well, we couldn't do that because that was Election Day. So then we got the results the next morning, and we had Wednesday, Thursday to get the packet together into the board. And we would have had to give you a draft procedure at that point. So we really did not feel that you wanted us to spend money that was not necessary on this issue until you got the ballot results.
Okay, well, so we are moving on to item, agenda item three at this point. So we have a proposed application procedure here, and this has been worked on by Mr. Lippens and Mr. Burns and Mr. Aines. And this is given to us tonight to get input. Hopefully, we will be able to deal with it at the next meeting, but my suggestion is we go ahead and provide whatever input for this application procedure, either tonight or in writing preferably, to Mr. Aines and Burns and Lippens. And I would prefer that a committee of maybe two board members also work with them to come up with something that we're all happy with. That's my suggestion. Otherwise, we can go through this. I think it will just eat up a lot of time to wordsmith this thing and question everything that's in here, potentially. But what's the feeling of the rest of the board? Ms. Chick?
I don't see any harm in going through it. I have some questions, and it is listed as an action item on here. And if anybody has any other additional information they'd like to provide to Mr. Lippens or Mr. Aines afterwards, that's fine. But I'd like to get as much done, since we're on a timeframe, it appears, to make some kind of changes.
Okay. Ms. Otto?
I do agree with having the committee, but I do also agree with Janet is going through this. I think that as a board, we need to give some guidance in this as to expectations. And so that would probably be beneficial, since it's on the agenda.
Okay, well, let's go through the notice of application procedures then and provide whatever comments you would like to Mr. Lippens at this point. You're going to be able to take good notes, I assume, Mr. Lippens, from our comments.
I can. It might be helpful if I provide some big-picture numbers on what you got here. I mean, there were some questions that came up.
Feel free. That's a good idea. Yep.
Even during the last gen item, and I think we intended to address in this item.
Okay.
You know, one of the things I said in my cover memo was that we'd tonight talk about recommendations for modifications to the procedures and materials, but also discussing setting dates for accepting applications. I think that's one of the concerns that the board has. And I think we can discuss kind of what actions we can take to set a date that's reasonable for the township. And, you know, the board had already authorized the township manager to develop this. I think it's important to frame this discussion that we are setting an administrative procedure, an application for an ordinance, that the language that's included in this application ordinance is not something that carries the same weight as regulation or legislation. So we can work with the committee. You can charge us to do it. And then I think probably most importantly is that, you know, we can modify our application materials if, you know, if we want in the future. What we're doing now is we're establishing a process, really, for the initial set of applications. So some of the big-picture items that I think are important to understand, you know, one, the, I'll go through the materials that are presented in your packet one by one. The first one is a one-page document that we prepared. And I prepared this through consultation with Mary Bird from the billing department, Jennifer Carlisle, the township manager, Vidya, the zoning administrator, and Mr. Burns. And what we did was we worked through, you know, really, what accepting applications is going to be like, and talked through, I think, a lot of the questions that the board has in kind of reading this to say, you know, from an administrative perspective, what are we going to do? And how are we going to accept applications? The purpose of having a document like this is really just to explain to anyone who's curious what we're going to do when we start accepting applications. And the model that we've discussed for applications in the past and that we've kind of based this procedure on was the Grand Rapids model. And that was using, and we actually did at one point discuss with the board over the summer, creating a lottery system for applications. But the lottery we're suggesting we create is just for the order in which we review applications. We're not suggesting that we do a lottery to assign licenses. The order in which we review applications, the first thing we'll do is determine if they're complete. Second thing we'll do is notify people that their application is complete and that they're entitled to file a site plan application and a conditional use application, basically begin that part of the process. We realize that probably a lot of the applications we receive won't be complete. Some of them will be complete, and we'll be notifying people in, you know, per the lottery number, about which line they have to basically have their applications reviewed. The reason why we do this, right, and this was, this is done in Grand Rapids, done in Traverse City recently, done in Mount Pleasant recently. The reason why we're doing this is because there's a legitimate public health, welfare, and safety concern with having people basically feel pressured to line up to submit an application, and the first application we receive is the one that basically would be first in line for considering for entitlement. If that, if we went down that way, we could. And I've worked with municipalities that have done that, and there has been a. done that, and there has been a line, and it's, it's a perfectly reasonable way to do it, but it puts a burden on your public safety, your officers. I mean, I think we would want more officers present if we took that approach. So, that's why we do, you know, we proposed new lottery for that initial window where we'd accept applications. After that window expired, we would just accept applications as normal. Same way if you're filing a site plan to open a grocery store, you'd come in and file an application at any time. We're really just dealing with that initial influx. To put that in perspective, you know, other communities have had in the neighborhood of 50 to 80 applicants in the first time when these come to effect. With relation to the second thing in the packet, which is the marijuana facility preliminary application and application, the board has seen versions of this in the past. This application is based on the Grand Rapids model. The board had asked us to develop this, and it's, you know, back in your packet for consideration. We've also got in here a voluntary facility local development agreement, and this is a document that was maintained, created as a supplement to the application, based on board feedback, basically to provide a simple method of evaluating applications for their merit and ability to address township goals. We looked at the Grand Rapids model and prepared this. Essentially, what we've done is suggested that there should be three criteria that, that applicants could voluntarily provide as a development agreement, that would be a part of their conditional use consideration, which is, you know, employing local residents, having a partial or complete ownership locally of the business, and basically asking, you know, or committing to not asking for any variances or special considerations as part of their site plan application. I think this is a simple way of providing some upfront assurances. Certainly, applicants could provide by letter or any information about what they intend the benefits to be to the township as part of the application process. But we thought, and it was suggested by board members at a prior meeting, that the Grand Rapids model was a good model, and it was simple. So then, in your packet, you've got two additional items. One is the example that the local development agreement was modeled off, and that was the Grand Rapids Local Equity Agreement that's provided as a reference, so that you can see it's a very similar documentation to something that's already been tried by one of the biggest cities in the state. And then, the other item in the packet is the previously shared marijuana facility scoring criteria. And this was based on Buena Vista Township, and it is a methodology for providing a qualitative review of an application for providing a ranking of the applicant's ability to meet with, or to meet the, you know, basically open a business in the township. And I could, I could provide for the board if anyone's interested, the authorizing act, I could read the authorizing act that enables locals to basically evaluate and rank evaluations or applications as part of the application procedures. Your enabling, or your ordinance does charge the administration with creating an application of procedures, and that's what we've done. So, that's the walkthrough of the applications, I think. Big picture, what are we really concerned with? I would say it's the notification of the application procedures. The idea of, do you want to just accept applications first come, first served, and basically create a line? And if so, we should just talk about staffing that we would want available for that. I think, you know, when going through the, with the manager, what your staffing will be for when the ordinance will come into effect on the 26th, I think it's probably obvious to everyone on the board, you're going to have less staff in the office on that day. It probably is not the best day for your, your applicants to come in and file their applications either. So in talking that through, that's why actually we came up with the idea of doing a window, because that way people could at any time during a window, come in, provide their applications, and we would do the lottery at the end, as opposed to at the beginning. It's similar to how you would receive a bid for work, and it's, you know, perfectly good way to rank all the applications. So you could set the date of that window however you like, and the benefit of doing it as a window is that we could start accepting applications right away on the 26th, and essentially at the end of your window, that's when we could assign a random order to the applications we received. Alternatively, I, and I think Mr. Burns could provide you with some advice on this. I know MTA has provided some guidance on setting moratoriums. You could set a moratorium in effect to, to allow the township time to develop a application process. Alternatively, I think you would need to do that via ordinance, and I, I think that maybe Mr. Burns could provide you with guidance on that. But certainly, the concern is, is that your ordinance comes into effect on the 26th, and either we are accepting applications on the 26th, or we have something else in Then finally, I think that you, you've already authorized the manager to work on the procedure. I think we want to be authorized to execute the procedure, and certainly, because this is an administrative procedure, I would recommend if, if you do set up a committee, that you authorize that committee to also execute the ordinance we came up to, we come up with, or not the ordinance, but the procedures we come up with, when it comes into effect. So, basically authorize an administrative process, and authorize who you want to be in charge of that administrative process, is my, my personal recommendation, because we want to accept applications. You pass the ordinance, we want to be ready to accept the applications. So, that's a little background, so thanks.
Mr. Burns perked up. Did you have something you wanted to contribute, Mr. Burns?
I think whatever the procedure is, should be on the next agenda, and the board should vote on it-
Okay.
-and approve it. Yeah.
Or, next agenda, or could it be January 10th? I mean, what's our first meeting in January?
I think you should have the procedure in place-
Before-
-before the ordinance.
Before we take any? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I think you should have it in place on the 10th of December.
Okay. 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 Ms. Otto with this.
Okay. So, I'm, I'm hearing a lot of things, so I want to get something clear. If we extend, I'm, I'm just throwing this out there so I understand what needs to be put in place. If we extend the application process, accepting the applications, say, January 31st, then that means that we have to put a moratorium in place, an ordinance in place, to accept it as such? Okay. So, if we wanted to extend the accepting of applications on, and I'm throwing out a date, January 31st, does that mean that we have to have a moratorium in place, or an ordinance in place, to support that action?
I don't believe you need a moratorium, but you may consider an ordinance, an administrative ordinance at your next board meeting, outlining the procedure and the criteria.
Okay.
So, I, Mr. Burns and I discussed and agree, agree on that. If, if you do have, I think, and I'll refer this back to Mr. Burns, but if you do decide to do an application window, and then do a lottery at the end, basically to set the place, the order in which the applications are considered, as long as you start accepting applications on the 26th, or when, as, you know, as soon as they come to effect, you don't need an administrative ordinance or a moratorium. Is that correct, Mr. Burns?
No, I, I think you should have the whole process in place before the 26th, and I think that the board should vote on it, ideally it'd be in ordinance form, and it should be done. Because you can expect that you're going to get applications on the 26th regardless of what you do, potentially.
What if we don't, what if we decide to set a different date to begin accepting applications? Because the 26th, look at, it's Christmas, and, you know, we have like three people in the office, and-
Well, that's why I was asking.
Why was, wait, that was my question, why do we do that?
Why don't we say mid-January, or January 6th, or, you know?
But I think if, if we wanted to change the date, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Burns, you're still saying we should have it done if, by the next board meeting.
Oh, for sure.
I think you should have all of it in place before the zoning ordinance goes into effect.
At our next meeting. Okay.
Right.
Yikes. Okay.
Yeah, so, part of my problem, and I'm just going to say this, to, part of my problem with this application procedures is, I do understand it now that this is the initial application, now that we are, we're just starting, so this is the initial application, but it never addressed what the ongoing process will be. So, that's why I was very confused as to why were we doing only a window? I know that it's trying to control the amount of, of applicants that are coming through, and that we, and I now understand the lottery, but I don't understand the lottery. It's a little confusing, and it's really not spelled out very well of what the lottery is supposed to do, or an example of what the lottery does, because how you explained it is not how I understood it. So, I think, and, and I think some of these procedures kind of contradict each other, so I really, I do feel that we do need to have a committee. We need to probably work through some of these procedures, because I'd like to see the workflow, and how these procedures are going to work, and, and also determine at that time for the December 10th meeting, because I've already asked for it once, is that we hire additional staff, temporary staff, to help us through this.
Okay. Ms. Chik?
I did withdraw it on my last, at the last meeting, but I still feel that we may need this.
I don't know. Go ahead, Ms. Chik.
Okay. I just want to, I want to be real simple here, because I, I sent out an email, I have, my confusion, not confusion, my concern with a lottery, or with first come, first served, you're going to have a line out there anyway. And if that's the only reason why we're determining to have a lottery, I don't think it's, from my view, the best way to go. I think it's more fair to have first come, first served, and this is just accepting the application. You get it timestamped, you get a date stamped, I got the application, okay, we will consider it, we'll go through the scoring, and then you get your place on the Planning Commission. That seems a whole lot simpler than doing a lottery, which to me, I think it can be a little confusing, or it might even be challenged. It might not have been so far, and those communities are using it, but I, my feeling is just make it as simple as it possibly can be. We're probably going to have a line, but you're just talking about people submitting applications. They're not going to be in there, you know, reviewing the application, they'll just be submitting an application, correct?
Correct. So, yeah, at the time when the application is received, the first page of preliminary application will just be stamped, time stamped, and we'll accept it. They'll all be reviewed for completeness after that.
Correct. Okay. So, I, I, that's why I didn't see the benefit of a lottery. This just seems more clean cut to me. And then, the holiday week, I get, you know, it's December 26th, but if we're gonna, going to, excuse me, have a window, why would we use the second half of one week and the first half of the next week, and, and as opposed to giving a longer time, so that you don't have such a line at the window, if there's going to be one? We don't even know there's going to be one, so.
The, the dates, I think, were entirely, are entirely up to the board. I think a longer window would make sense.
Okay.
Just the lottery thing, I understand it's confusing, but like in Grand Rapids, they did a, you know, ping pong balls with numbers on them, and just drew them out for how many applications they had. The, the reason why you do that is, is we're not talking about a line. Of course, if you have 80 people submitting applications, you're going to have a line. It's, do you have a line for several days? Do you have people trying to buy places in line? Do you have an attractive nuisance where people are, you know, pushing ahead? That's why, you know, I think that you have to get the chief involved-
Yes.
-if you really do want to basically say, you know, 8:00 AM on December 26th, we're accepting applications. You know, I have done it that way before, and from an administrative point of view, once we have the applications, it's the same. It's really just until the timestamp that is the issue. And what a lottery does is it lets applicants know, hey, it doesn't matter if I'm there a week in advance with a tent, or if I'm there right at 8:00 AM, or if I'm in line two hours before, or six hours before. In this case, we'd say you have a window, get it to us any time in this window, you've got the same chances. Now, if your business is better, if you have a better site, if you've done the background work, it's a, there's a whole process to go through after you get that application.
Right, but I think people need to, or applicants need to understand, just because you're the first one in line, and the second one, that doesn't mean that you're going to be on the Planning Commission's schedule, first, second, or third, it's right.
It doesn't, so-
And you can be the end of the line, or the beginning of the line, right, or the scoring, that's what it's based on.
And the first thing we're going to do is tell people that we've got a complete application.
Right.
And if you don't have a complete application, you might need to go back to work and, and bring us back some more information.
And you have to consider too, you know, you might have 80 people lining up in Grand Rapids. This is Northfield Township, much smaller community, yeah, so, I, I think it's, we shouldn't compare one to the other as far as the number of applicants we get.
You got something?
Twelve.
Okay. Kathy?
My opinion, I agree with the lottery system. I don't want people lining up here, and that's just, I mean, during the holidays.
They don't line up anyway.
And if you have a longer window, then maybe people will know, okay, don't have to line up. Plus, it'll give our staff a little bit of breathing room also. And I guess I'd like Mr. Ains' opinion, whether you think we would need an extra body, and what would that person be able to do?
The, the week that we would be involved with between Christmas and New Year's, we'd be down two of our full-time people. So, and then in addition, McKenna's staff, Paul, the zoning administrator, and their assistant are all three on vacation, so that's why that would be a problem. When you get into the first week of January, something that Mr. Lippins had pointed out was that you can utilize the fee that you're charging upfront for the cost of getting a license towards paying for either McKenna's staff or hiring somebody to help in the process. And so, in this initial window, if it was three days or whatever, it might be simpler to just have McKenna provide staff for that time period, and then if you get into evaluating further, you might need something else. But again, if you're looking at 5,000 piece, what we've talked with, with both Yvette, and we've talked with the auditors, is how do we set up a system where that money is taken expeditiously? It would have to be by a certified check or something of that amount. We're not handling cash, we're not taking credit cards, so forth. So I think it can be handled well, but we just need to have the timing with it. well, but we just need to have the timing with it either way we go.
Related to staffing too, this is also covered in my memo. I know I'm not available and Diddy is not available, but I have confirmed I've got other assistant planners that are available. And, you know, what I said to Mr. Ains was, your zoning administrator rate is a reduced rate, and I would just give that rate to you. I have no interest in processing these applications or sending my staff over here, but I want you to be able to do it well. So, you know, just to make it happen, you know, we would, we would help you with that. And I put, I put the number in the memo. Obviously, I don't think you'd need us if you do the window. I think your staff is enough. You just have to have your staff on site.
Yeah.
Then, once the applications are filed, you know, if you get 80 applications, we'll be processing the applications.
That was my comment. I don't know that we need a planner or zoning administrator just to take applications.
No, I don't.
Yvette could, until we hire somebody, she could probably...
You can just get an administrator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Delmott?
I need a little help in understanding. So, basically, we have three permits for each type of business. Well, we have three for dispensaries. We probably have more growers, but we have for three each class. So, let's just take a dispensary. We have three recreational adult use permits. So, how does the process look like? If I get three, I get 10 applicants for an adult dispensary, and obviously, I have three licenses I'm going to give out. So, how do I distinguish between the 10? How do I make sure it's fair and equitable? And so, I just need to understand how that's going to work. And if the all 10 are equal, then what do I do? I mean, how is the process select supposedly the best three out of 10? I'm just using a number.
That's what we're going to figure out.
Yeah. But I need to understand what you've presented to us to determine how that's going to work.
Well, there are, the overall, right, it's the same as it would be any other type of business, right? When you file an application, we, the township, process the application according to the established land use regulations. For this particular use, there's site plan application and there's conditional use procedure. You know, the way we do it is, the application comes in, that's the first one we're working on. And when that one is reviewed, we provide a letter. You know, your engineer provides a letter, chief provides a letter, your planner provides a letter, saying these are, this is your plan. This is how it meets the township requirements. If it meets the requirements, we schedule your planning commission. If it doesn't, we ask for additional information. With the conditional use, that use has to also be scheduled for a public hearing at planning commission, which requires notice. And almost always in the development process, you need additional information from people. They, there are requirements that people didn't foresee in site development. And we go back and forth with applicants to explain regulations to them. And sometimes, planning commission asks for additional things when it goes to the planning commission. But let's say, for the purpose of argument, that everything gets approved at the same time. That's why we've asked additionally for the voluntary local development agreement as part of the conditional use approval. Those are authorized both under the enabling legislation for the Marijuana Act as well as land use regulation for evaluating conditional uses. We would be looking at those voluntary development requirements to judge, you know, merit for how planning commission would recommend one use for approval. And when I've done this in other communities, you don't really, it doesn't really work that every ordinance gets adopted or every application gets adopted at the same meeting. Usually, there's some spread, and we're just going to have to process the applications, right? However, once a use gets established, that is the use that will take precedence when it comes to buffer requirements. So, and that's the same with any established use. If you have a required separation between a business and another business, the business that is legally established takes precedence and establishes that buffer. So, this is, this is why we need to have a procedure and establish an order in how we're processing the applications. And then just document how we process each application. We've done it before. I've done it before with medical marijuana, when, you know, we've received, had clients that have received multiple applications at the same time. And during the course of the review of those applications, certain sites, certain developers or business owners are better prepared to meet the local requirements, and their applications wind up getting completed first because they're prepared to open a business. You know, and that's, that's, that's what we're looking for, people who are prepared to do this right.
So, that's really, so if I had 10 qualified applicants and they were of same standard, and I have to pick three at the end, is it just, and they all, let's say they all score 10 out of 10, how do I do that? I mean, so let's say everybody is prepared. I have to believe most of the individuals are going to be extremely prepared, and I could be wrong. And then they go through the process, and I have more applicants prepared than I have licensed, then how is it that I'm going to pick the three?
How do we do it with alcohol?
I did.
We don't have that, usually.
Not, not all 10 people are going to get...
Alcohol was pretty easy, unfortunately. We didn't have, I mean, I can add, I mean, Ms. Otto, they didn't have to come through like really site plans. They filled out their requirement to the state, and the state said, yeah.
So, I would assume that not all 10 people, even though they score exactly the same, when it comes to the conditional use of the site plan, that's going to be the deciding factor?
When it goes to the planning.
Yeah, I know. So, you're telling me that people are going to come and not have the conditional use in the site plan investigated and researched and all that, potentially?
Well, don't, don't...
I'm thinking not.
It has to be approved.
It's the end of the process, yeah.
Right. So, I'm just thinking that they're going to be very well-prepared and have done their homework before they show up. And that I may be, where I have six very qualified applicants that are equal, how do I pick the three?
So...
Not me personally, obviously.
I would just say, as your planner during that process, I, if, if there was a situation where I felt like everyone was going to be all prepared and we were going to have an issue with the number of licenses, I would notify the board and your attorney at that time. But, you know...
That definitely means we better get it done by December 26th.
Well...
That's a definite then.
I think, and what I was going to say is that the, what you need to be concerned with now is accepting the applications and establishing a procedure for processing the applications. That is what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. Well, when we take the applications, your ordinance is good. And that, at that point, we're looking at land use law. And that's well-established procedures for processing cases when they come in. And we're going to follow the law to a tee, and we're going to do good planning. And I'll notify you if I think that there's issues like that arising. But first, we've got to take the applications.
Ms. Bellinger?
My question is, if, let's say, for instance, I wanted to open a dispensary, and then we're going to do the lottery routine here, and I just wanted to open one, can I actually file multiple applications to maybe, as a lottery, buy more tickets than just the one?
See, these are all, all good questions, and we talked about things like this when we were creating the document. We could certainly do more, but the document does say, you know, one application per site. We talked about, well, what if somebody has multiple sites and multiple uses? I think that's fine. You can file multiple applications, one application per site, and you just get a multi, you know, you'd have two spots in the lottery. But you have to pay one fee.
For the same one, for the same one operation? In other words, if I wanted to increase my chances of getting looked at sooner, could I buy five applications for my one particular dispensary I want to put in? That's the question.
One application per site.
One per site.
So, if we received multiple applications for a site, we would exclude the...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, can I go through mine? Thanks.
Just as long as you pick me next.
Okay. I'll pick you next, but I didn't get a chance yet.
I had my hand up, very politely.
Okay. I didn't get a chance yet. Okay, so I'm on the application procedures. I think that December 26th is impractical, and we ought to pick something in January at least. And then I have a question here about stacked licenses, because you could have one location. You know how we're talking about stacked licenses? I don't see that mentioned here. Would those be separate $5,000 each stacked for the same location? Is that true?
Yeah, because it's per application, bud. Right. So, that's just something we need to consider. And I think a lot of this can be done with the committee. You know, a lot of these questions. And I think probably we're going to get into, you know, the minutia here. If we, if we don't move along with this, we could have the committee doing it. So, I think people ought to make mention, since we wanted to do this, of all their issues here and/or send an email with them to Mr. Lippens, and that would be helpful. So, I don't have a problem with the lottery. I think that's a good idea, and I think we should move it to sometime in January, the 6th or beyond. And I think we can just add a number 10, say, "Applications will be accepted post-window, first come, first served" to process. So, that's all I have on that page. Go ahead, Ms. Otto.
Okay. For accepting applications, I do feel that we need to have a checklist for completion.
Yep.
That would be, that would probably streamline the process a little bit faster. And this way, there's an auditing trail of what came in, what went out. You ask for a cashier's check, I would also recommend a certified check. It's just as, just the same. I would also recommend not putting an end date. I know we would start accepting applications at a certain date, but I think that we need to not include an end date, but make it that we are submitting applications, that we will notify persons of submitting applications of their application completeness by 30 days from the date that they submitted it. So, I don't want an end date because they can say, well, you're shortening my day or something. I just think it has to be 30 days from the date they submitted.
Okay.
I, so two recent comments, you know, one was, what are we going to do after the window, the initial window?
Right.
And number seven, you know, basically says, if you arrive after the window closes, which in this memo was January 2nd, you'll be processed and order received, but not until after the township processes these initial applications. And so, you know, number nine is, for the applicants in the application window, we'll be notifying you at that time. If you don't submit during that application window, my thought was that you would be processed just like any other application following that, you know, once those initial lot of applications were received.
So, if we're going to have application window at the beginning, I think you need to, we need to have definitions because it didn't, it didn't, it wasn't very clear in here. So, I think you, we probably have to have definitions for what the application window is, and a definition for if we are going to do a lottery, what is a lottery? What is that, what are the, what's the process? Or what does it mean by first come, first served?
I think those are great suggestions, but if we get the big picture items agreed to by the board, we can work that out in this document, really up, you know, up until the time when we post it.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea. Okay. Oh, Ms. Manley?
Um, I guess my first question is, if we move the date of acceptance past December 26th, what do we need to do? That's when we would need the moratorium?
So, there, I'm going to take a shot at this because I've talked with Mr. Burns about it, and I'll let him correct me. So, there's, there's two ways that we can proceed. One, you know, we will be more solid if we, in our ordinance 67, the procedures ordinance, do a more solid reference for what our administrative procedures are going to be. So, we could, that's an administrative ordinance. We could do that at the board at the next meeting. And we would add references to the state act, which authorizes us to establish an administrative procedure. It's already in there, but we would strengthen it up by referencing the actual items that authorize that. And then we would basically also reference the township's administrative procedure and how we're approving that, which I believe is already in there, but we'll strengthen it up a little bit. The second option would be to adopt the procedure as a separate ordinance, which would also carry the weight of the board's action. So, that's what I understand Mr. Burns requesting. I also know that, you know, moratoriums are not a, something we would ever advise you to do if, if not, you know, kind of your least, your least favorite choice of action to actually taking, making an ordinance or establishing a rule.
Okay. So, if we extend it, you guys will have it figured out?
Mr. Burns says that was okay, so.
And then, I guess my opinion on the committee, I mean, we already have the two Pauls, Steve, Mary, Jennifer.
We've been making rows this week, talking about it.
Pardon?
Who else do, would we want on the committee? I mean, there's already five people.
Well, some board members, I thought, would be interested.
I would, I would be on it.
Yeah. Ms. Otto wants to be on it. Okay. Ms. Chick wants to be on it. Okay.
Do you meet during the day or do you meet during the evenings?
Yeah.
Well, if it's, for me, if it's during the day they want to meet, I would have to do a conference call, and I've done it before.
I'm just asking. I'm just saying, when do you meet? For me, Monday through Fridays, I'm pretty busy in the evenings, but obviously, not so much during the day. So, I'm just asking, when do you typically meet?
Yeah.
Yeah, given the nature of this, I think we would be looking to meet next, next week. I know I have held the entire day of Thursday, the 5th, to do working sessions here. I certainly could arrange to do calls and such before that, but I just blocked out that entire day to be here if needed.
But don't we need to have the stuff done way before that, though?
Yeah, for the 10th.
In order for it to be in the packet? Has to be done by the 3rd?
That's the challenge is...
Yeah. So, I mean, for me, I have, I have, I have days off.
Yeah. I mean, I'm good, except for Thursday.
I guess we don't have to schedule the meeting now, but...
I'm just asking again, when you typically do it, if it's during the day or evening?
I prefer daytime.
Yeah, we would have to have a, because it has to be in the packet on the 4th.
Correct. You might be able to get an exception on this one. You might.
I'm also available tomorrow, all day, so.
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
And I am too.
So am I.
So am I. Oh, wow. Well, you can't have more than three. Whoever wants to be on it.
What my thought too, though, is I personally think, if I read this and read it, is McKenna would be able to help us on December 26th?
Yeah, so I, I did confirm that I have two staffers available to help you. We've got people working, and I've blocked out their time to help.
So, personally, I see no reason to not meet the December 26th deadline, date, so we don't have to do any worried about one ordinance and all that, as long as the application is complete and we're happy with that. So, I would plan on hiring the two McKenna personnel and move forward and plan to make sure we're accepting the applications on the 26th. and move forward and plan to make sure we're accepting the applications on the 26th.
And I would also be available on the 26th and 27th.
So, okay.
Have December to come in the office.
Oh, okay.
That's Thursday and Friday, is it?
Uh-huh.
I'm not, sorry.
So, that's what, I would plan on doing that, hiring them. And as you say, we just need to make sure we keep the funds different. And so that we allocate, we know the revenue we're taking in, we know the costs we're expending, that we would pay McKenna out of that fund as opposed to our general fund. So I know you've got Ms. Patrick or Ms. Starbuck is working on that to make sure that's set up. So...
Okay, so, let's, let's kind of move on here. So who's going to be on the committee? We need no more than three board members. We've got Ms. Chick, Ms. Otto, and Ms. Selma.
Especially if we're meeting tomorrow.
Yeah. Okay, meeting tomorrow?
Uh-huh.
Awesome.
Well, I'm available after about 9:30.
Yeah.
9:30 AM.
I'm sleeping in.
The morning is good.
Okay. Everybody else get their comments.
So go stop on the way to work, we're on the way back.
Okay. Okay, everybody send the issues.
So what time in the morning? 10?
10.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good start time.
And I have a lot of issues, and I, I would like it, like us to have a decent scoring mechanism, this, this check, 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 and 10 is, I don't think is that good. I, I think we need to say, okay, what's the, what are the most important aspects of it to us? And then wait those, you know, I, that's my two cents. And I'm going to look at that scoring mechanism more seriously.
So, just for, for questions, or to understand the comment, it was my understanding that the doc, the scoring mechanism that I initially created, that I put in the packet for reference only, was rejected by the board. That you do not want something like that.
I do. I, I think some of the comments, some of the items in the scoring are worthless. Okay, they have a security. They have to have security anyway. You know, so some of those things. But I think the ability of a business to have capital, to manage, I mean, if we're going to invest in them, we want to make sure that they're going to be successful.
That's in there.
Yeah.
It's in there.
But I think what you're talking about, and I, as I read it, is you have to make sure that the company that is applying, if they have a million dollars' capital for this, that it isn't spread among several businesses that they own. That the one that they're coming to in North Village Township has the million dollars, not the ton that they own throughout the state.
Sure, sure. But I liked some of the portions of this marijuana facility's scoring criteria. And I think there's, there's some value to portions of it. You know, when it comes to talking about what's important and what's not important. As opposed to the few little checkboxes on this local development agreement thing, you know, so. So I have had conversations with communities, and basically what I've been told is that you have, you can't have, ask vague questions that are open to interpretation because you will get challenged. They have to be yes or no answers. Yep. Sweet and simple, and you don't need to ask for anything that they've already supplied to the state, or they wouldn't even be here. Correct. Okay. Correct.
Just, Mr., you have indicated that this model has been modeled after Grand Rapids. Is that correct?
The local development agreement model? Well, yes, that's...
Yeah, but that's not the score sheet.
Oh, yeah, the score sheet was used by Buena Vista Township.
Right, right.
And so that also has been used. So there are elements of that that board members like. I think you could send those comments to the people who are appointed to the committee before 10:00 AM tomorrow. And we'll consider them.
So I have a question. I mean, so what does, I mean, two of the item, two of the cities that we talk, even though we're not a city, is what does Ann Arbor do and what does Grand Rapids do? Do we know? Do we have that? I mean, how do they do their applications? Do they do them on a random basis?
This is Ann Arbor.
Yeah, okay. So that would be good information to have, because we always talk about those two, to me, and you hear about them, having a good procedure or certainly being a good business climate for marijuana, which we want to be a good business climate. So I would kind of keep it simple, follow what they're doing, and not necessarily have to reinvent, because again, they're known to have a good marijuana business climate. At least that's known. People may tell us differently.
All right, can we move on to the next?
Just one other comment. As I've had a number of prospective businesses contact us on this, they've had questions about these processes too. So I've encouraged them to let us know what those concerns are. And so, it doesn't give you a lot of time, but if you can get information back to us, you go on the website for the township, you can send it to my email address or the board members. You've got till 10:00 PM tonight to get those in. But...
Anytime before 10:00 AM tomorrow.
Yes. But if you could get us any questions, we'll take those into consideration as well.
So I have one question. If anybody from the public wanted to attend this meeting tomorrow, would the board be open to it?
I'm concerned about conflict of interest.
We could ask our attorney that question.
Yeah. What would be the conflict?
What's the point?
I'm just asking.
Ask the question again, Mr. Burns, and I'll hear you.
If someone from the public wanted to attend the meeting tomorrow on the application process, could they attend?
That's up to the committee.
Okay.
Because it's not, because I understand we're not going to have a quorum.
No, we won't have a quorum.
All right, so if there's no quorum, it's up to the committee.
But the, to me, a follow-up on that, Mr. Burns, would be if they, if, let's say there are potential applicants that would come, would there be a perceived conflict of interest going forward?
Yes, there could be if it is applicant.
I'm asking, Mr. Burns, thank you.
Typically, it would not be an open meeting. It'd be a works, staff work session, really.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Moving on to agenda item number four. Okay, the North Village Committee. All right. We didn't get anything back really from the committee. Mr.? Yeah, we got a report. Mr. Lippens, would you like to discuss this and...
Yeah, I'll walk you through my cover memo on the agenda item. I'm just turning to it now. So, the board is in receipt from a second purchase offer from A.R. Brower. That offer is in your mem, your, your packet, and something we could discuss this evening. I have been in touch with Livonia Builders, and they provided email and, you know, verbal confirmation that they are still interested and very much want to have some feedback from the board on their offer. And at the last meeting, you asked for a couple of things from staff. You asked for a template for purchase offers so that we could basically provide both interested developers with a template that would kind of standardize the, the language of their offer. And Mr. Burns did provide that template. So one thing you could do tonight is basically agree that you want to use that template, and we could provide that to both offers for, you know, a revised offer that matched your template. I did make an attempt to work with the township engineer to prepare a legal description for the part of the property that the township wants to retain. I did, I think it took a little bit, bit of time, but the engineer, OHM, suggested that you use the surveyor that you used prior to do that work. So, I think we could talk basically about how we want to proceed with that, that part of the assignments. I think you had also requested a revised assessment. And I'd have to get an update on that from the township manager, but I believe we have not found someone to agree to do an assessment on the property at this time either. Or appraisal, I'm sorry, appraisal.
Right, our assessor didn't believe he could do something, could do justice to it.
Right.
For us. So, we would need to get an appraiser, which we've always used John Widmer.
Right.
For everything, so.
So we could discuss tonight whether or not the board wants to proceed with just evaluating the offers in lieu of having an appraisal on the property or not. So, our next steps, we, we need to determine if we need an updated appraisal on the property to move forward. We need to receive the property description. And we've been asked for a scoring evaluation from the North Village Committee. And we did discuss at length providing that scoring evaluation at our last committee meeting. And it was the opinion of the committee that they should score after they get the financial offers in the board packet to compare them with the criteria that was previously developed. So now that we have those offers, I would plan to set that meeting and provide scoring in, in your packet as well.
Ms. Bellager?
Would it be appropriate to take this document as provided by Mr. Burns and attach to it the actual descrip, you know, the legal description of the property that we're wishing to sell? And give that back to the two developers for them to make their best offer? Is that reasonable?
I think that's the intent of the process.
Okay, so I would like to move to do that. See what they can come back with. That's what I think would be great, is both of them an opportunity to see the property itself and then to fill in the blank with what they're willing to...
But aren't we kind of putting the cart before the horse without having the scoring criteria completed first?
We can't get the scoring criteria without knowing their real offer. That's the point. So this would give them an outline, because the developers don't have a significant outline to know what box we want them to fit within. That's what the whole purpose of this document was about.
You could score on everything but the financials.
Yeah, I think you could.
Yeah, we could. Everything but the financials. But they should come, be able to come back with the financials really quick after we hand them this, right?
If we give them this, they can give the offer. And I think that would be the next step, to give them something tangible to work with. If they can give us something tangible, we can evaluate it and then negotiate or go from there. So I would actually move to, to do exactly that. To affix the property description to this, the part that we want to keep and the part that we are offering to sell, and to provide these to both of our, at this point, two offers, Livonia Builders and A.R. Brower. Yes, that is a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Bellager in support.
Good luck with that one.
By Ms. Chick. Okay. And we have now discussion. Will you, Ms. Manley?
I have a question. So as far as like the land division and like the land division act, is it possible that we can just combine the parcels together and then cut out the section that we want? How does that work?
Yeah, we can, we can divide the larger parcel. I think the, I don't think that we've decided to, to combine some of the smaller parcels the township holds, because they could be sold separately if needed. So it's really the one larger parcel
Okay.
that the township wants to basically retain the front part of that in public, as public space. And we, you know, we determined in consultation with the committee and with the township attorney, that the cleanest way to do that would be to just put it in the legal description of the purchase offer, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's one big parcel? Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Bellager and support by Ms. Chick to provide this template to the developers and request their best offer.
I just have a, just a discussion, not necessarily on that motion, but at this point in time. So has the North Village Committee reached out to the Wasnaugh Parks and Rocks yet?
Don't believe so.
Is there a time? Okay, is there a timetable to do that?
To develop the park area?
To just see what they have. They may, who knows, they might pay for it. Again, we pay taxes to them. $156,000 a year. They have done some stuff in the township.
Are you talking about that entire piece of property or the park that we...
You could have them look at it, you know, offer both, but I would start with the five acre minimum, right?
Right.
That's what we put in there? And just see, you never know, they might make a good offer for the whole darn thing. I would, I mean, I'm asking that we reach out. There was a motion to do that, so.
To, to sell them the whole 23 acres or something? Is that what you're talking about?
No, to sell them, just to talk to them and see what their thought is about it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm understanding what the question is. And certainly, as staff representative, I can begin that process and provide a report to the committee.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Also, when we had the orientations through the road commission and the park and recreation director for the county was there, and also Jackie was present, we did talk to the recreation director, said we had an interest in projects and we would get back in touch with them, see what we would be able to do with them.
Okay, great.
And one more item, just, you know, again, we did make a motion that said anything on North Village coming back needs to be scored. So I really don't want to see things without it being scored. Personally, as one board member.
Okay. Ready to vote on this? We're voting, we're voting on providing the template to the developers.
Okay.
Right, and requesting their best offer.
With?
With the draft.
With the, with attachment.
Over the property.
Exactly. Yeah. Does that mean we need a legal description with the five? Well, we're not even close to that at this point.
Do you, sorry, I'm just trying to think about procedures. So I think, think where we're at with respect to the legal description is that we are going to have to contract for that service. I don't think it'll be a terribly large amount, but does the board want to authorize the manager to spend up to a certain amount to provide that legal description? Or do you want us to bring you back an estimate?
No. Mr. Veery mentioned that his engineer could do that for his.
Right.
And then we wouldn't have to pay for that necessarily. He, because he's developing this and he's developing a site plan, he could pick out those five acres as long as he knows what he's got to cut out.
So do we want to revise the request to ask each of the offer, offers to provide a legal description with their offer of what they intend to purchase?
That might be a better idea.
We could do that. And then, you know, and then it doesn't necessarily have to be a straight line. I mean, it might be adjustable a little bit based on where the best soils are or something toward the west side of the site or something, you know.
I can certainly communicate that if it's included in your motion.
But is their legal description going to match our legal description?
Well, whichever one we sell it to. Yeah.
That's a subject to negotiation.
Yeah.
What was your comment, Mr. Burns?
It's a... I'm just saying, the legal description is designed to be specific.
Well, it will be once we sell it to whichever one we want to sell it to.
So the purchase agreement is the document that provides for the specific legal description. So you need...
Them to figure it out for us, right?
And you, if you have them do it, you need to have it reviewed by the township engineer.
Okay. He says you can't have a mushy line. Get him a mushy line, yeah.
Well, then, do we just take that part off and just have them have the direct agreement?
Direct agreement? Well.
Providing the legal description of the park. And just give them the draft agreement.
Okay, then we won't get it done very quickly. That's all.
Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Burns, on how to move forward with this? We want to, we want to get this document to the people, to the, to the two of them.
Just hire somebody to do the description. Say, what's a guesstimate for a survey cost?
The property's been completely surveyed, so I wouldn't expect that for the surveyor that did it for the township be a thousand or fifteen hundred bucks.
All right, Steve to do that.
Then you know.
It's under as five thousand.
Then you know what you got.
All right, let's call them up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so I'm a little confused, where are we now?
Okay.
We're going to get a survey.
Yep.
Confirm the survey for the park section out, not to exceed two thousand dollars?
And so then we will attach the property survey to the template?
Right, and get these to the both, both developers.
So, that's the, that's your amended.
Yes.
To the motion, I'll support that.
Thank you.
Okay.
And we all realize it's a minimum of five acres, it can always be larger.
And get it done as soon as possible.
Five plus acres is what we're looking for.
Okay. So, we have amended motion by Belliger Otto to attach the property survey for the park with a minimum of five acres. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. So, then we have the main motion for, with, offered by Ms. Belliger, support by Ms. Chick, to provide a template to the develop, the template provided by Mr. Burns to the developers, requesting their best offer with the attachment of the property survey with a minimum of five acres.
Legal description.
Park property survey, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes six zero. Okay. Any more comments on this, Ms. Chick?
When can the North Village meet so that we can actually score on these? Can we set something up?
I think we have to get something back.
Right, but, all right, how long do you think it'll take for them to get something back?
Probably New Year.
I think that we, well, we'll have to pull the North Village Committee to see when they, everyone's available, but I think we can schedule a meeting and probably address some of the issues we've talked tonight in committee. I can certainly convey the action tonight to the applicants at the first availability and explain basically, you know, we can provide them with the template immediately and explain that the one piece we're waiting on is the legal description. And so, we don't hold them up with revising their materials to fit the township's preferred format while we seek the legal description.
My understanding is that they would like some decision by, on December tenth because they need to decide, I mean, they need to figure out what they're doing next year, business-wise. We've been dancing around for a while here.
Yeah, I think that, I agree, and I've spoken with both applicants. And of course, you want, you want a decision and that decision needs to be made by the board. With relate, you know, with regards to scoring, we don't necessarily have to convene the committee to score them. So, you know, if convening a meeting is a holdup in the process, I would just work with the committee members individually to individually score so that I can get something on your agenda as soon as possible.
Okay.
Got a question. So, the question would be how soon are we looking, how soon will we be able to get the document to the two developers for them to actually give us their best offer? The holdup right now is going to be the, the legal description. How soon should we be able to get that attached to the document and offer those to both developers? How soon?
Well, that's, I'm suggesting we give them the template essentially tomorrow.
Give them this tomorrow, okay.
While we work on finding, you know, someone who can provide us with the legal description.
Excellent, okay.
We don't know who's going to do that right now, so I don't know how long it will take. But it's a priority and you're authorizing us to do it. The engineer, your engineer wasn't able to provide it, so we're going to keep working on that.
Yeah, because their attorneys would have to go through this, the same process of looking at the document and everything. The other question I have is, has to do with the appraisal of the property. Were we going to move forward with getting that?
We should.
Okay. So, I would like to make the motion to hire John, is his name John Widmer?
Widmer.
Widmer to appraise the property at North Village.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Otto, support by Ms. Chick to get.
Not to exceed?
Well, it's hard to know.
You don't know how much it's going to be?
Do we really need an appraisal?
Well, that, you have it down here as an updated appraisal.
Well, that's right. But.
Did you get your second?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so it was Otto, Chick.
Sell it for what, less than it's worth?
Right.
And so, my thought on the appraisal is, are we appraising it as is? And then are we appraising it what would be when there's houses on it?
Mr. Burns?
You probably have it both ways because theoretically, it's as is. You kind of know because you have purchase price and you had it appraised. But its highest and best use is something else.
Right, and that's what we're getting the appraisal for, is the higher and best use.
Right, so you need John to look at it both ways.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's the same way you did with the seventy-five Barker. You did it as is, improved and taken down and vacant land.
Thank you.
So.
I mean, we should put a cap, I mean, the township manager can sign things for five thousand. I don't think it should exceed that and if it does, he should come back.
Right.
Off sale?
Just kind of Google it.
I would imagine it's going to end up being more than that.
It may.
How much was it for the golf course? Does anybody remember?
Most of John's, this is unimproved.
Unimproved, yeah.
Most of John's appraisals have been between five and seventy-five hundred dollars, but more for an approved, you know, like a mall or apartment building or something that has an income stream. This is, does not have an income stream. But if it's more than five, John will need a contract anyway, bring it back.
Okay.
They would have to bring it back on the tenth anyway.
Then we won't get anything done hardly. Yeah.
Yeah, so we would, we would just have to say. Start the contract process.
Yeah, start the contract process, okay. So, we have a motion by Ms. Otto and support by Ms. Chick to retain.
Go ahead.
John Widmer to provide an appraisal of as is and the highest and best use for the North Village site. Do we?
We do have an ask.
Yeah, as is, should we minus the park area or do you want? Minus the five acres of park? Right. And then there's those additional small units, small ones on Main Street. If he could do those separately, that would be helpful. Because one of the builders doesn't want to do those. And that might be useful then, we'd have that information for someone else who would like to do a mixed use right there. So.
Well, you want to get those appraised later, at a later time, because the value may change.
Well, I imagine we're going to do, we're always doing it. I mean, I can't imagine it changing too much.
So, you're saying you appraise everything but the park area is what you're referring to? I mean, a few houses on there may change quite a bit. The other, the commercial parcels.
And you will consider that it's going to be a park too?
I would just have Steve talk to them.
Yep.
Tell them what we're doing.
Figure it out, Steve.
Yeah, figure it out.
Oh, sure.
Up to five thousand.
Okay. Well, no, it's probably going to be more like seven.
Well, I said up to five thousand.
Okay.
I mean, that's Mr. Ains's authority.
Okay, so, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, six zero passes. Moving on. Agenda item five. Oh, boy. Here we are, seventy-five Barker. Okay. We cannot sell the parking, we cannot sell the parking.
Well, I would actually make a motion to table the offers at this point until perhaps after the New Year.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Belliger, we have support to table until after the New Year.
How about a first meeting in January?
First meeting in January?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay. Do we have any discussion on this?
I just, is something going to change after the first of the year that we can't talk about it now? It won't be so late, no.
Probably missing a vote.
Missing a vote.
You're still missing a vote. You're going to miss a vote after the New Year too.
When is he coming back?
Not until March.
Oh, no.
Since when? March or February. No, he's going to just, he said he's just going to miss one meeting, but anyway. Okay. So, we put it up for sale, right? We didn't have any conditions, correct?
Right.
The four people that voted for it? So, how is it now that we can put conditions on it? And I have asked, and I have asked over and over again repeatedly that if you want to do this, you have to tell us whether you can do this. And what are the things that you want to do? And nobody's brought this back to the board and said, gave us an update as, you know, if we wanted to have a, you know, rent the property or do a, split the lots or anything, nobody, I've asked over and over again.
Okay, well, Mr. Lippens is here, Mr. Lippens.
Yeah, and he has made comments, but nothing has come to us in writing.
Okay, seventy-five Barker, would we be able to split that parcel? Split off the parking or most or all of the parking?
So, I would have to review the minimum lot sizes in the district to determine if you have two legal lots there. I think in the past I've suggested that you could certainly create an easement to the parking for yourself before you sell it. And, you know, that would basically be a public easement for parking on that, on that part of the site that you would own. Essentially, you would not be selling the rights to develop that. And that is, you know, you know, within, you, right now, you own the property, so you can determine what you're, what you're selling, what rights you're selling and what rights you're holding back.
Sorry, go ahead, sorry, go ahead, nope. My apologies for interrupting.
Yeah, no, you know, I'm just trying to, trying to be helpful, you know, certainly just because you made a motion to sell it too doesn't mean you have to. So, you can take it off the market, you know. I know that you've spent a lot of time on the property and you've set a course for moving forward. But I also, you know, know that there's interest in downtown development and it's a, it's a big decision. So, if you request some specific information from me, you want to report your packet, I haven't been asked for that prior, I'm happy to help. And, you know, I hope, I don't know, that's it.
Okay, let's get that report for the December tenth then, right? Would that be very difficult? It's a pretty good-sized parcel.
What, what report?
We're doing marijuana.
A memo.
Wait, slow down, slow down, let's, we, 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 let's, you know, throw five hundred balls up in the air. Marijuana needs to be our focus. I get it, seventy-five Barker. But how much more, I mean, we have a deadline of December tenth, right? And now we're saying, well, can you determine if we can split the property and if it's big enough? I mean, let's focus and get marijuana where we like it, we're happy with it and move it on as opposed to giving five different things to do.
But seventy-five Barker is one of the properties that's being considered for marijuana?
Then sell it as is. It's, you, you put it on the market, they've got an offer. I don't even know, Mr. Burns, can we legally take it off now that we got the asking price? I mean, we got four of three offers.
Probably, yes.
Okay, probably? Oh, I don't know, there's a commercial ball out, probably.
Well, I, you know, there's five offers and, I mean, but.
But, I mean, let's ask Mr. Lippens. What can he do by December tenth and just sort of throwing things at him? Can he do it all?
It's a yes or no thing, I mean.
No, can, you want to know if he can split it.
You want a review of the Barker property for a lot split?
Right, how big are lots in the downtown district?
What I, what I would do is basically a township-initiated lot split review for seventy-five Barker.
Okay.
And, you know, I could probably have that on your next agenda. We do lots of lot split reviews for the township.
And you can have it on.
No, probably, yes or no?
That's right. Well, I mean, to me, probably is more of a no. It's either you're committed and you say yes and it's there or no, it's not. But probably, maybe.
Mr. Ains has a comment.
Although Mr. Docket rebuked me for doing this, I felt at liberty whenever I talked to potential buyers to say, you know, would you be willing to have an easement and still be interested in the property? At least one of the parties I've talked to direct said they would be willing to consider that without affecting the price. So, that may be a possibility that you could sell it, but with them agreeing voluntarily that they would give you an easement for it.
Yeah, my concern is we sell it to somebody, the business fails and then they sell the building and the parking to somebody else and we have lost our, virtually our only parking downtown. And, you know, so that, that's my biggest, biggest concern here. Ms. Chick?
So, I'd like to make a motion to direct Mr. Lippens to do a study on seventy-five Barker regarding doing a lot split and have that for our next December tenth meeting?
I can do a lot split.
And I'll support it.
And we still have the other motion.
We still have the other motion.
The other motion is still up about tabling all the offers until the first meeting in January. Although I'm not, I'm not opposed to that, but we're still in discussion and I had a question also.
Okay, so, let's vote on the tabling till when?
First meeting in January, first regular meeting in January.
Okay.
Unless you think the second would be better.
It could say eight.
I mean, I don't care, second might be good, I just, I suspect we'll probably get more offers as well.
Well, that's true.
And then I had another comment regarding the concern with parking. It would be also perhaps something to consider that when we sell this building, the money gets put specifically in a fund to create a parking area. And we do have the property between Spiegelberg and the Stone House, we could put public parking, township property there. And that's part of that, part of the twenty-three acres.
Oh, yeah, if you're going to do that, you might as well keep the property you have. Because it's going to be a lot more expensive to create a new parking lot than keep the one you have. So, a question that I have too, when you have public easements rights and we don't sell the rights, you establish public easement rights and you don't sell it, but that easement cannot be used for anything other than what we established it for, is that correct? Or does that mean that the township can then determine we're going to start building on that easement rights?
It would be, I'm just seeing if Mr. Burns wants to respond. You'd have to specify what the easement is for and.
And that would be in perpetuity?
Yes, yeah, if you establish a court.
Because you own the whole, what we call a fee simple interest, the entirety of the property.
Okay.
You can define the easement however you want. And typically, the easement would be in perpetuity or run with the land, as we say.
Okay.
Ms. Manley?
Yes, in regards to tabling the purchase agreements, I understand to some extent why.
I understand to some extent why. But these people also, if they're interested in the property, they're gonna wanna get in on the application process. But on the application, if I'm reading this right, the pre-application questionnaire, does the business have legal possession or ownership of the business location? Yes or no? If it's a no, that automatically throws out your application, right? So, that means if you have a purchase offer in, on Seventy-Five Barker, you don't own it, so you can't even apply.
We would, so there's three questions on the pre-application. We're asking them to fill out those questions.
Right.
And we're accepting all applications regardless of whether those answers say yes or no.
Okay.
So, says yes or no, we're gonna get a timestamp application.
But it says, if any of the buggers answer no, the applicant is not eligible to apply. So, they can apply, but it's gonna kick them out when we get to that process, right?
We're gonna take the application, but, but yes, they're, they're gonna go to the end of the line, basically.
Okay.
So, so one of the things that, um, one of the parties brought to my attention, and this will be something for the committee to look at tomorrow, is what does it constitute to have, you know, control of the property sufficient to apply? And whether that really is the accurate statement? Or is there something like you could have a lease or an option purchase or things like that, which I had intended to talk to Mr. Burns about, but hadn't had the opportunity today?
So, could simply having a purchase offer be qualifying enough to further the application process? I guess that's something that may make...
Can we talk about that? Yeah, can we talk about that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Can we move on and start taking votes or...
Okay, so let's, we're voting to table or not. Bellinger, Chockley, till the first meeting in January? Or a meeting in January? I, I don't know, I don't, unless consensus is to make it second meeting, I...
Let's make it the first so we can, you know, just...
I think the first meeting is probably sufficient.
Yeah, first meeting in January, okay. So, uh, do we need a roll call on this? Anybody gonna vote no? All in favor, say aye.
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 I just wanna, you know, I have not been and I do not support a selling that property.
I don't either.
And so, I have been a no vote throughout because I think we should keep it. It's in the downtown plan.
Yeah.
The planning commission has said, hey, why don't we refer it back to us? The DDA has, you know, said they can get people to look at it and do an estimate. So, I just want people to know, I have never been for selling that property. And I'm still not for selling that property. Listen to our audit report, we're in good shape. I don't know what the hurry is. So, that's just me personally, and I have been or against selling it, so I'm still against it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I, for a long time, thought we oughta just kinda restore it, but that's, so... Well, we'll see where we end up with. Can I make a motion to renew the contract with assessment?
Well, wait, 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 wait.
On the floor?
We, did we have a... Vote here to table? You're the only no.
I said, I said yes.
You said yes, okay, we're voting to table, six zero.
Oh, vote.
I didn't hear the vote.
All in favor to table, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed?
I thought there was another motion on the floor.
Yes, there's another one to, um, direct Mr. Lippens to, um, now who, who, um...
Janet.
Janet?
Jackie.
Chick?
Uh, Chick.
Oh, to do a lot split?
Yeah.
Yeah, to evaluate that?
To do a study on a lot split and have it to us by December tenth.
Yep.
I support. Or do you already have a support?
Oh, there already is support, okay.
You can do either roll call vote, I'm voting no for that.
You're voting no? Okay. Uh, roll call. Bellinger?
Yes.
Is that one a?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Otto?
Yeah.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay, that passes five one. Okay.
Can I just make a comment, last comment on there. In, in the downtown strategic action plan, there are actually three scenarios for that corner. One is keeping the building, one is demolishing the building, putting an infill building so that it's more compliant with the area.
Yeah.
And then, I forgot what the third one was. So, there are options to do things with that property.
Right.
And parking lot.
Yeah, of course, parking lot.
But at the time, we did not even consider it, so...
Right, yep.
So...
So, we put it up for sale. I think, I think part of the problem is, is that now it, it's, it's taken us a long time and things are settling and now we're seeing that people want it. And now everybody's backpedaling, so, um...
That may be some of us.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I said to put it up for sale and, and I still feel that, um, we don't have the money or we have, don't have a plan in place to restore it. So, it never has been. I've asked the questions, none of them were ever answered, so that's why I said, go ahead and sell it.
Okay. I, I just, we just need to retain the parking. That's my biggest concern.
And Mr. Roman did send the correspondence advising to send it back to the planning commission to...
So, I'd like to actually have that as an agenda item, 'cause I think it needs to be, again, public, his note, and then we need to take a, a vote.
Okay. Okay, you want us to note the packet?
Well, yeah, going forward, and I want an agenda item, we're either gonna vote on it or not.
Okay, here's, here's the note and the...
I understand that.
Yep. If anybody wants it out there.
Didn't make it in time for the packet.
So, we'll put it in the next packet?
Yes. And we can put it on and make a vote.
Okay.
But I think we all seen the same thing that Larry provided us.
Yeah.
The, the point is, is that we went through discussion after discussion on this and, and nothing was ever presented other than to sell the building.
Now, Larry sent, this is the point, first time he sent this, yeah.
I got the synthesis plan, I got it all, but when questions were asked, nobody came back with answers.
The DDA wanted it torn down.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Seventy-Five Barker's coming back on. So, I would, I would ask that Mr. Roman's email be put in under that agenda item.
I agree.
Please.
Can we move on the agenda? Because we're gonna be obviously hitting Seventy-Five Barker, you know, again here soon.
Okay, so, we've done those motions, okay. The next one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Assessment Administrative Services LLC from December fifteenth, 2019 to December fifteenth, 2022.
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Chick. Any discussion on this item?
Should we add to the motion, the first year's cost would be ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars? For sure. With a two percent increase per year thereafter?
Yes. Okay, absolutely. He would like that.
He'd be proud.
All right.
Any motion with expenditures should have the dollar on it.
That's why I actually put it in the memo, so, okay.
Didn't put it in the motion.
All right, I'll put it in the motion, that it is ninety-eight, four, sixty for the first year, which is an increase of nineteen twenty from the current year.
And a two percent increase per year thereafter.
Okay.
I would also do a friendly amendment stating that Paul Burns had reviewed and approved the contract language.
Yes, okay. Okay, and Paul Burns has reviewed and approved the language, okay.
Support if you didn't get it.
Okay, so, motion by Chockley, support by Chick. All in favor, say aye.
I have discussion, though. I mean, it's a three-year contract.
It's a three-year contract.
So, we will be committing, obviously, the 2020 board to this. Do we typically do three-year contracts with them?
That's pretty common, and it's, it's cancelable with thirty days' notice.
I had the same thought, but then I saw the thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thirty days is pretty good.
All right, I missed that. That's pretty, I mean, I will say that, Mr., I have been very pleased and worked very well with Mr. Monchak and Mr. Griffin.
Griffin.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has improved immensely.
Oh, yes.
So, I'm very, you know, treasury, we have to work pretty closely with them.
Yeah.
I think they're good, very good.
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. All right, so all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes.
Does the contract, do we have to do anything?
Pardon?
Do we have to just no roll call vote, just, yeah, okay, fine. I'm getting late, it's almost ten.
Yeah.
We're good.
So, can I move to approve the contract with point and pay for credit card processing services? Support.
Is there a beginning date or anything on that?
Uh, there is no beginning date. You get in a queue, they said it might be two months to be able to have them come out and make the switch.
Okay. Are you...
I had a question on this.
Sure.
Um, you...
Oh, okay.
I'll support.
I support it.
Ms. Bellinger? I mean, the Zellner's supported, okay.
So, the current software BSNA will no longer support the product that's currently being used?
That's correct.
And that's just something that the company BSNA has decided to drop that?
Correct.
Okay, so, and you did put the percentage here, the costs and so forth?
So, it will be...
So, the question, and I think people need to understand, official payments, are they paying a processing fee plus a percentage transaction fee?
No, they pay, depends on taxes, you pay two point five, five percent. Point and pay will be three percent. Sewer is a flat fee of two dollars and seventy-five cents. It will be a percentage of your sewer bill. And most sewer bills are ninety, twenty, so it's slightly different, but any time the sewer bill goes up, the percentage will go up.
Okay.
So, again, um, official payments basically is being dropped by the software that our entire township uses for assessing the taxes to the general ledger.
I think that's dirty.
Huh?
I think that's dirty on their part.
I am, I am not very happy. We've had official payments for a very long time, they just won't integrate into it.
They kinda stick it to you that way, I hear that?
Unfortunately.
So, we'll have to raise a little bit of building permit fees to cover the three percent?
Um, again, this is a fee that the customers pay.
Okay.
And it isn't, it's a convenience fee. We don't get anything from it, we cannot charge people.
Oh, so it's an additional fee that goes onto their bill and they pay it? The three percent?
It doesn't go on their bill, it's a...
I mean, it go, it's a credit card fee that they pay in addition to.
It's a credit card fee that they pay. So, we don't, we don't get any of these funds. It's a convenience for them. We have had issues with, as I've mentioned before, with official payments, but we had the contract, but Mr. Burns was able to have them bend some. So, that's why we're bringing it back. Um, we just had a couple of issues with official payments and trying to undo a transaction, so, and it was difficult.
Is there any additional fees on the bank side, merchant fees, that we get charged?
No.
Okay.
We don't get anything. We don't get charged anything for this.
Okay.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, six zero. All right.
Can I, can I make a motion to request to have the zoning compliance application fees waived for the Christmas tree sale for Kiwanis?
We have a motion by Bellinger, do we have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Motion by Bellinger, second by Chick. Okay, discussion. I'm gonna have to say that my concern is being fair across the board. Kiwanis, Kiwanis is a wonderful organization. I cannot, I cannot praise them enough for what they do for the community. However, they are a nonprofit, they are a business, and we charge our other nonprofits their zoning compliance fee for, um, you know, for the same things. And so, like, the library paid their zoning compliance for their pavilion. We had Northfield Human Services pays theirs, People's Express, Living Water. I mean, they all pay their zoning compliance fees. And if we start eliminating that for one, then you almost have to do it for everybody. And that's, that's my biggest concern here, is we're picking and choosing who gets benefits and who gets, um, you know, these little perks or something. Now, Kiwanis is in Seventy-Five Barker for zero rent, zero rent. Can I ask? That isn't right either, but that's happening right now. I, I, I think we need to be careful. We have gone down the slippery slope now, and, um, so I do need to vote no on this because I think we need to be fair for all of them and we need to treat them all the same. So, that's my two cents. Ms. Bellinger?
Um, I'm curious about this fee for a temporary sales event, where it, where it came up from and why it showed up here. I don't recall this before. What, why the charge, I...
It's a new ordinance that was put into place.
The board voted in favor. It came before the board.
So, this applies to...
Temporary sales for holidays and things like that. It is a safety issue, um, that, like, if you put any kind of structure up or any, using any kind of electricity, anything like that, it has to be inspected so that either you're making sure that the person running it and the customers are safe and that everything's compliant with the ordinance.
Is it, is, does this, I mean, so, do you think the Christmas tree sales kinda fall into that? Is this, maybe this...
Temporary holiday sales, yes.
Okay.
So...
It seems a little expensive, a little, little extreme for selling Christmas trees, to me.
I don't...
Well, the township doesn't make money on their fees that they charge. They can only charge what it costs them to, um, you know, utilize them, so... It's not unusual for communities to have the same thing.
So, I'm the one who wrote the request, so I am not going to be voting on this. I'm going to recuse myself from it since I am a member of Kiwanis and I am, uh, Chair of the, um, of the parade. The sales of Christmas trees, uh, the money that we, we get from the store, does, we don't get any money for the Fourth of July parade from the club at all. Everything that we raise from the committee is separate from the club. So, the Christmas tree sales is separate from the club and it goes directly to the Fourth of July parade. So, I wanted everyone to understand that.
That's important to know, I think.
Yeah.
So, it's going for truly a community, the Fourth of July parade, a community event?
Okay. So, I'm also on Kiwanis, so I will be recusing myself. Um, in general, I agree, if we do it for one nonprofit, we would need to do it for all nonprofits. But I will not be voting on this.
Okay. Ms. Manley?
Yeah, I just wanna comment that I did speak with Marlene earlier to see what our policy was on this and what we've done in the past. Like, 'cause I do recall the library asking for their fees waived and we didn't do that. And I remember People's Express, so, again, we have to do one for all.
It seems like it used to be a civic event, um, a long time ago, but...
We did have to do a civic permit, uh, before, and, but now that it is, this comes under holiday sales, we have to do a zoning permit. Yeah, and I did have to do a site plan and everything for it, 'cause we are not doing it inside of Seventy-Five Barker, we're doing outside.
Okay.
But this is more of an event where, I mean, the, the whole thing is about the parade, correct? Unlike the library or, or the other things that people mentioned here today?
Yes, all the proceeds go to the parade.
Yeah. And the township, doesn't the township donate to the parade?
Uh, don't we do something with police?
Fourth of July? I thought that there was...
Um, our vendors, some, uh, majority, there's a few vendors that do support us. I can list them if you want.
No, I think, but doesn't the police offer their service?
Yeah, um, police offers, offers their services through the parade. I mean, I sit down with Bill and we go through the whole parade route and plan it every year.
There is, there is a line item in our budget for Fourth of July. Now, I don't know who gets that, but it's in there, so...
Maybe it goes to the police, then?
I think it goes to the police.
Maybe it does go to the police, too.
Because I think he asked last year for that.
Right, right, I think that's true.
Because, isn't it like $500 or?
That was a thousand.
A thousand? Yeah.
But, it goes to the police, it does not go to us.
At that, I think because of the Fourth of July weekend, and it might be the whole weekend-
Could be, as we do.
For fireworks, because he gets volunteers to, he has to get off-duty police to come in and do it.
I'll miss you.
Okay, so, I'm torn on this because I certainly would like to be able to say, yeah, let's not charge it, but, again, it goes back to the fact that, you know, you have to do it for everybody, any 501(c)(3), which might be another policy issue down the road, but, and in regard to the money going to the Fourth of July, the $200 for the library could have gone into the library for books or whatever, or their programs, so, you know, that expense and, and any issue or item that they paid on, they probably could have used it for something else as well. So, like I said, I'm torn, I, I don't know. I guess we'll vote.
I know, it's tough. Do we vote?
Yep, we should vote.
Roll call.
Roll call.
So, the vote is to waive the fee?
The vote is to waive-
She wants to waive the fee.
Wave the fee.
Yes, to waive the fee, so, if all she asks is to waive the fee, okay.
It's getting late.
Yep. So, I'm double checking, I'll go first, Manley, no. Otto, are you recused?
I'm recusing myself.
Jake? Zelenik?
Upstate.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chalkly?
No. Okay, so that failed.
Go ahead.
Pardon?
I said, it's getting late.
It is getting late, huh?
Getting tired.
Okay, so, we're, now where are we? Agenda item nine, creation and distribution of RFQ for legal services. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the township manager to create and distribute an RFQ for municipal legal counsel immediately.
Can I add to that, I'd like to actually have the attorney kind of review it or assess with that, please?
Can we copy your, your contract now? Okay. Yeah, and have the attorney review it?
Or maybe even offer, offer assistance?
Okay.
That'd be great, if you could offer assistance with the writing on it.
Well, I would like to also include, the RFQ is done immediately with a December, so it's available for December 12.
10, 12?
That we have, we have RFQs back.
Oh, to have people respond?
Right.
By, well, then they'd have to get in our packet by the third or fourth. That's really fast, well, we could, maybe, maybe.
That's kind of tough.
Oh, they would have to have it out there, no, that would be way too fast.
That's too fast.
I would say, then, I would say by the first meeting in January.
Yep. So-
Can I put out a thought, too?
Sure.
I mean, if Mr. Burns has any suggestions of people that we could reach out to, or anyone else, or Steve, or even Mr. Lippens has any referrals possibly that we could reach out to, to talk to?
Maybe reach out to other townships before the RFQ?
Don't we have that attorney that we used to use out in the Irish Hills? Yeah, Fred. Yeah, because we've, and before, and don't we already have an agreement with him?
Fred is insurance counsel.
Oh, okay.
Yep, gotta talk in the mic.
He's been co-counsel with me because he gets appointed by the insurance company.
Yeah, but I think sometime, there were times that, when we had issues where we couldn't use you in litigation.
I would bring Fred in.
Yeah.
But, I'll talk to Fred.
Okay.
I know a firm, too, that's very local.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, what other townships, can we reach out to other townships?
Yep.
Who they're legal?
Make some connections.
We can do that, too, and I've been looking through the MTA magazine, because there's advertisements there, and I've asked Vichia about groups she's worked with, and I asked Stacy, your labor counsel, if she knows of people, so, we can do a lot of that type of thing.
So, it would have to be available by the, for the 14th, so, have the RFQs into the township by the 7th?
Yeah.
By January 7th?
Sure. And, do you want a recommendation from Mr. Ames, too? I mean, do you want somebody interviewing, or how do you want to do that?
I wasn't sure if the board wanted to solicit them by a certain date and then have the board as a whole interview, or if you want to delegate.
I would like to review.
No.
I'd also want recommendations and our-
Yeah, then have a committee to review it.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, so would I.
Okay.
I also would be interested.
Okay, so, Otto, Chalkly, Bellinger. Okay.
Yes. Can we, can we, again, just kind of repeat the motion?
Yep, make a motion to authorize the township manager to create, distribute an RFQ for municipal legal counsel immediately and have the attorney review it and have the, well, deadline? Well, have it, have a recommendation available by the first meeting in January. And the committee to review the applicants with the Otto, Chalkly, Bellinger, and Ames. Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, six zero. Item number 10.
And, do we also need to have a motion to accept Mr. Burns' letter of resignation, with regrets?
Okay, we don't accept it.
We don't?
We do not accept it.
There must be a legal thing.
Must be, we don't, um-
Just can't go, huh?
You can't go. No, we're, we're really gonna miss you, Mr. Burns. I mean, you, you allow, you provide levity in a lot of our meetings, you know? So, I, I know. I know.
The two paws can tell us that.
That's for our attorney.
So, I will, yeah, we, I will make a, a motion to receive Mr. Burns' letter with resignation.
Isn't it in the packet, doesn't it have to be in the packet or no?
It's in, it's in the packet, huh?
Okay, I missed that, what have I been looking at, unfortunately?
Page two. No, no, it's not.
Yes, letter is.
Okay, sorry.
Right here.
Oh, yeah, now he, yeah. Okay, I must have the one that doesn't have it in. Okay.
No, it's at the top, second page.
All right, so, all in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
With regrets, right?
Yes, with regrets.
And appreciation.
And appreciation, yeah. You've been awesome, Mr. Burns. No.
No, December would be-
No.
Can't be his last meeting.
We'll torture him again in December.
Can I also request that, can I also request that we ask Paul Burns to provide us a summary of, of outstanding issues, cases-
Cases, yeah.
For our December 10th meeting.
That's a good, good idea.
All right. I'm thankful that he's willing to help with, with the new person coming in, with the transition, thank you very much.
Can I have a quick question on that?
Yeah.
So, in the RFQ, are they going to be putting in their fees requested also? I mean, who determined that? Did we determine what we're gonna pay them?
I'm sure they would tell us what their requirements would be. You know, because we could put an RFP out there and say, okay, we're only gonna pay you 100 bucks an hour, which wouldn't fly, I'm sure. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve JPC 190007, Whitmore Lake Climate Storage LLC, for a conditional use permit to allow mini warehousing, storage facilities, under Article 23 dot 1.
Support.
Okay, motion by Chalkly, support by Bellinger, any discussion? Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes, six zero. All right, I'll be so happy that, for them, that they get their project done finally. It's been going on for a long time. Okay, where are we now? Announcements. Anybody have any announcements they would like to make at this time? Ms. Bellinger?
Wish everyone a happy, wonderful Thanksgiving. I do want to mention that Parks and Rec, um, will bring, bring a name to the, to the township board here to approve for the new Parks and Rec member.
Okay.
So, we had a meeting recently on that, looks, we found, had a couple of candidates and we agreed upon one, and so, that's good news.
Okay, great.
Kialan just announced that the Land Preservation Committee is looking for applicants as well. We've received three so far, so, please, and we have three vacancies, but please apply so we have some more choices, or choices. And I know a couple of other members have been there a while, and I think once we get stabilized, they have other commitments, so, there'll be other opportunities, but I appreciate people applying as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And any other ones, and I, I do know that there's opportunities on the DDA, definitely need businesses in the DDA district, business owners. And, and I need a board of review alternate, and then, there's a couple openings for Planning Commission if, if the couple other planning commissioners are not returning. So, anybody who would like to apply, please do, we'll keep them on file, just in case. We have an opening even at other times, so, that's it. Any, Ms. Otto?
Well, I, I did want to thank the board for consideration for the, for the permit. If you don't ask, you'll never know.
That's right.
So, what I wanted the public to know, too, is that this Saturday is the start of the Christmas tree sales. So, we do have only 50 trees that we have purchased this year due to lack of supply. So, if you do not, if you're interested in getting your tree, get it early. We have one tree, one type of tree and one type, one price this year.
All right.
$45.
And what type of tree?
Fraser fir.
Oh, those are nice, yeah.
Five to seven foot, that's it, that's all we have.
Okay.
These are the best.
Yeah, I got a nice one from the last year. Okay. Any more announcements? Okay, second call to the public. Now's an opportunity, if anyone would like to come up and share anything more with us tonight, three minutes or less, please state your name, your address, and make sure the microphone's turned on and hold it close to your mouth. Good evening.
Dave Gort, oh, I was at his table, my bad. He's watching.
I'm sure.
Adam Ollie, Whitmore Lake resident. So, I appreciate everything Dan Willis does, all the time he gives the community, but when he sits up here and he says, "We think, probably, maybe," it just, there's no confidence behind what he says. The whole, whether we're legally responsible or not, you guys need to take action. You're telling me in the history of this township, we've never paid for sewer backup? You're talking about precedent? You're talking about precedent, like, oh, well, we might waive this fee for this one, that's a precedent? Like, you throw precedent around with more weight, depending on what the topic is and what your view of it is. So, that line's been there 25 years, these flushable wipes aren't a new thing, they didn't come out in the last three months. Like, it just, it has to be something else, and it's just, it seems like a real cop-out for the township to, to lean on. And the insurance company of the homeowners, they have all this information from the meeting now. You think they're gonna pay out this insurance claim? When you got the school saying they did something, you got the people leaving a block in it, you got the township saying, oh, we don't know, it might be flushable wipes? Like, it's, you're not doing that many favors at all, you're gonna lead to a legal battle, and it's gonna cost both parties a bunch of money, and no one's gonna be better for it. You're delaying the purchase of the 75 Barker is delaying the potential of an applicant. Like Manley said, it's, it's a slap in the face to put it on the agenda, you get them here, and you just table it. Don't put it on the agenda, then. You had four more, four members vote to sell it, right? So, now that docket's not here, you're gonna change it? Doesn't an actual person who voted in favor of selling it have to change their vote? You're just, like, backtracking on things here that have already been settled, and you just keep putting them on the agenda, and you wonder why we're here so late. Please don't mess up North Village, please don't mess it up, please make sure the park's done first. Like, if, if the developer does his buildings and then the park, it's gonna look real bad. The park's gotta be done first. And then, the, an issue, there's some boat storage, like, behind, kind of next to Family Video, it's not Family Video's property? But, I was just kind of looking at the ordinances, supposed to have a six-foot fence behind all the required lot lines, if it's actually properly zoned for that, like, it's loading up with boats right now, so, it just looks trashy on our main intersection of our town, just like Polly's with their cardboard storage stacked up next, like, right on our main street, so, and you said the DDA desperately needs businesses? You had them here tonight, and you just tabled it. So, you, there's potential that you're gonna lose those offers completely. So, you had an offer for over $500,000 for a building, for a 75 Barker? I mean, it's just, and, and you didn't have an offer for over a year, and now you're just like, eh, we'll table it, we might want to split it, eh, we might put an easement. All this could have been done before you had offers, you guys are doing this backwards. Like, this is why we're here so late, and this is why no one else is here. All your potential business owners left because of the board.
Thank you, pardon?
Marisia Perschent, 32 Shum Drive. I just want to start by addressing, funny, I'm also gonna talk about David Gordon, even though he's not here, hopefully he's watching. I appreciate the email that he sent because, you know, we get up here and we address our concerns, and a lot of time, there is no follow-up, and that's by no fault of yours, it's, it's, you know, the design of the public meeting and to keep everything from becoming a back-and-forth dialogue. But, saying, "I'll be here next Tuesday if anybody wants to join," isn't really a statement that inspires a vision of transparency, nor does it demonstrate any kind of willingness to invest time or energy or thought into engaging with your constituents. Treasure, Ms. Zelenik, I appreciate your interest in delivering to the people what they want, since you asked. I would love to see frequent Q and As being delivered. Before the meeting, I think, would be most convenient, we make ourselves available on Tuesday nights, as you do, so that we can be here. I'm sure that you'll need a moderator, as you said, because not all of us know how to play nice, unfortunately. I think that's just something you're gonna run into any time you get a group of people together. But, an informal gathering where we could all share concerns would be undoubtedly, it'd be beneficial for the community and for the board as well. Incidentally, I do think there is some missed opportunity on the board's part about listening to the public. I think that sometimes we are speaking and maybe you're just not listening. When our concerns go unanswered, the us-versus-them mentality widens, when really, we should be working together to close that gap and make this an awesome place for everybody to live. Take, for example, Mr. Warburton's FOIA, Freedom of Information Act request. He went through all the proper channels to submit that request, he showed up here tonight to say he plans on appeals, but plan on appealing it only to be told to follow up again. It's a really small town, I don't see why any of that red tape needs to be in place, when in fact, he is standing here saying, "I plan on appealing this." Why anybody can't take that as an appeal or direct him to the next step is kind of beyond me. I just don't think in a town this size, we really need all of that bureaucratic red tape. Mr. Burns, thank you for your service. I've only been a resident for five years, but I've only heard good things, so, thanks for being here with us, and I wish you the best in your next journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good evening.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah, take it out, though.
Take it out?
Yep.
All right. My name is Omar Fakori, 2642 Creek Bend Drive in Troy. I'm really kind of interested in, the reason I came today was to listen on the marijuana discussion. I did, I'm actually a cannabis licensing consultant, also as well as an applicant, so, a lot of the cities that have been discussed today, between Grand Rapids, Mount Pleasant, Traverse City, those are all cities that I've submitted to and kind of have some good knowledge on. Generally speaking, I do have some concerns in terms of alignment on how to select applicants. It didn't really kind of sound very clear on what that process is, and I'm glad that there's a meeting here tomorrow to kind of flesh through that, but, you know, when language is used- is used about first come, first served, or lottery, or merit-based, those are all really three different, separate processes to select applicants, right? So if you're gonna do a scoring, merit-based application, there really isn't much purpose to a lottery, because ultimately, whoever scores the highest, you're probably gonna, you should be selecting as the winners. Now, a lot of cities do shy, or municipalities shy away from that, you know, because they don't want litigation, and, you know, if there are subjective criteria, so they kind of go towards a lottery type of structure, but, you know, there really are kind of separate processes, they don't all necessarily have to kind of go together. Other comments, I think, Janet, you mentioned something about an application window, and there's gonna be a line anyway. To be honest, if you have an application window, you're gonna need to ramp up on the last two days. You know, that's when, you know, that first day, nobody's gonna come in and submit, because it doesn't matter. You know, everybody kind of waits in, gets their application really nice and tidy, makes sure it's good to submit, and in that last two days, that's when you need to ramp up, you know, with staffing. Just based on what I've seen, Traverse City, Mount Pleasant, again, all had that same issue. I think the last thing I just wanted to touch on was the ownership, you know, definition, what does that mean, so that was referenced on the, on the application. I mean, every other municipality, you know, if you have an option agreement or a lease, you know, then you kind of control the asset, and you should be able to submit it based on that, you don't actually have to own the building. You don't have to own the deed, I mean, you don't have to, you know, as long as you have access and rights to it, an accepted purchase offer, not just, hey, I submitted an offer on a building, now can I submit it? No, it's got to be an accepted, mutually agreed-upon offer. I think that's, I think that's really it. So, yeah, just, you know, happy the discussions continue on, I'm glad you guys are meeting tomorrow, I think there's a lot to flesh out, so I appreciate the urgency. Thank you.
How do you spell your last name, sir?
Yeah, it's F A K H O U R I.
H R U. F A K.
H.
R.
O U R I.
O U R I. Okay.
And if there are any questions after the meeting, or anytime, I'm happy to, happy to discuss. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, whoa, sorry, Robert. Okay, oops. Stop.
Could I make a couple quick comments?
Yes.
One is, when someone asks and files a freedom information request, that's a legal process, that we have to follow the directions of the state and, and our attorney, so there's not a whole lot of ways to short-circuit it. The first five days are almost always extended by another ten days. And in some cases, because of your filing system and your past records, there are times where we can't find a file. And when we, we are talking to some firms about how to go through and, and scan all your files, and have systems for checking the records by name recognition, or, or title, or whatever, but those are very expensive processes that you'll probably have to phase in. So there are times we have to have answered, you know, we don't have it, or we have to, anything that's attorney-client privilege, we can't respond to. Also, I sent Jennifer, my assistant, to training a while back, that was provided by the Freedom of Information Request Coordinator for the State Police, and they receive thousands of these kind of responses. So it was good training for her to be able to do that. The other thing, regarding the offers to purchase, I have to bring those back within the number of days before it expires, which means the next board meeting, otherwise, I'm not carrying out my duty to inform the board that there's an offer, but you have that ability to table or counteroffer, whatever, so that's why it's always on the next time. And there is definitely a lot of interest there, so you, we'll talk more about tomorrow, I believe, but that is a factor. If one of these parties wants it for the marijuana use, then they have to be able to have something in order to be able to apply timely with other applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to board member comments. Do you have anybody? Ms. Chuk?
I'm thinking Mr. Fakori brought something to mind, those, that the window of application, well, we're calling it a window, the short window, that we can probably extend, but those application forms are gonna have to be available before that window opens, correct? So that people can bring them in? You don't want them standing in the office filling out applications. So we should have them online or available for them to.
Right, that was one of my questions that I forgot to ask, is are we ready to have that on the website now?
Well, it says on the.
And the answer's no.
It does say on the form that the website, or the application we posted on the website, there's a link, and of course, it'll be available at the township. So basically, as soon as we get approval, they can go right up on the website and be available for, and it says that on the form, so.
Okay. So, and I did have a question about the FOIA as well, and specifically, Mr. Warburton's FOIA. He said that when he got information back from his request, that a lot of it was considered attorney-client privilege. So is that attorney-client privilege based on documents that were attorney-client privilege to the board, or is it just attorney-client privilege that the attorney doesn't wish to, or the whoever, I don't know who all is on the FOIA? Can you explain that to me, so I know, what is it?
So, any communications between staff and board members and the attorney, our attorney-client privilege communications, they can be waived, but the board has to waive the privilege. The board is the holder of the privilege, not the attorney. And so if you ask for communications between staff and the attorney, they're part of the privilege unless you waive it.
So I guess the question is, is why didn't the staff bring it to the board to ask if it could be waived? Before the, before reaching out, before releasing it, or before releasing it and saying that it could not be answered because of attorney-client privilege?
The form that is used by Jennifer actually has the statute on it, and if anyone feels aggrieved by it, the appeal process is actually on, on the form. So customary conduct with a FOIA request that's in part denied, or totally denied, is the appeal, a written appeal is filed, and it comes to the board.
Yes, you requested.
So, so he's appealed, but he hasn't filed a written appeal, which is required by the Freedom of Information Act, and then it would come to the board.
I pulled all of my emails, and I think I might have had one, one, maybe two? You know, so it wasn't, it's not like there was a lot of stuff going back and forth, and I don't even know what it was.
Well, I was just trying to understand what he meant by attorney-client privilege in regard to a FOIA request, yeah.
Yeah, especially when we released letters that are already attorney-client privileged.
And actually, I think that one was released to Mr. Warburton, because the board had already released it, the one letter from our packet, so, anyway. Okay, board member comments? Any? Ms. Otto, do you have some you'd like to make?
Uh, no, it's, it's late, and I wanted to thank everybody for coming out, and I think I really greatly appreciate, not only that I have PTO tomorrow, but other people are available, so we can go through this process of, of getting the application done, so I appreciate everybody's time out.
Great, okay. Ms. Bellinger?
Just, I wish everybody a safe, happy, blessed Thanksgiving.
Okay. Ms. Selvick?
Yes, have a nice, happy Thanksgiving. It's one of my favorite holidays for eating. I want to, Fakori, is that how you say it? I'm not sure if I got it. Thank you for your, the information and input, and again, I know we made that offer, but if anybody else wants to submit something for the committee to look back for tomorrow, that would be great. I think we might want to put in communication, the FOIA process. Mr. Burns just explained that, on the appeal, and the fact that client, anything is considered client privilege. I think people need to know that, as far as that. As far as the sewer, as far as the sewage spillage, yes, I think the easy thing for the board to do would have been to approve it, and probably the public, the popular thing to do would have been to do that. Again, our fiduciary responsibilities, I need to know what liability that puts the township going forward before I can do that. And so therefore, that's why we made the motion. Again, I think the popular thing would have been to just approve it. I don't know the future impacts that will have on the township, and that's our number one job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I look forward to the question and answering. Thank you, Marissa, for giving us your feedback, and again, other people give us your feedback on how, and what days you would like that. Thank you.
Again, just, just like everyone else, happy Thanksgiving, and again, any questions, please call us, email us, we're open, we'll respond back to you. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm happy to sit down with anybody, make an appointment with me, I do it all the time, so that's my job. So anyway, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, have a great holiday weekend. Good night. Yeah, motion to adjourn. Support. Okay, motion by Chalkley, support by Bellinger. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay.